On clock, I'd say it's time to go. Thank you to whoever changed and put new batteries in the clock on the wall. I appreciate that.
It's not typing too.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the City of North Pole Special City Council Meeting. Today is November 24th, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Skips?
Here.
Ms. Rolfe?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Here.
And Mayor Church.
President, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here this evening for this very special council meeting. Bless our decisions that are made here on the dais tonight. Bless our city, bless our residents. Watch over those who are needing extra care during this holiday season. Help bring families together that are split apart and watch over our troops who are unable due to their service and protection of freedom to spend Thanksgiving or Christmas with their families. In your most holy name we pray, amen. Brings us on to item four, approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please? Moved to approve the agenda?
A second.
So moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the agenda for the November 24th meeting, Ms. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Claus? Mayor Church.
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none, that brings us on to communications to the council. Madam Clerk, do we have any of those this evening?
Nobody's provided me written communication and nobody's sent anything in or requested to be attending by Zoom, so no, I do not.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us on to item six, citizens' comments. Madam Clerk?
Comments are welcomed. I don't have anybody that has written in. They are to be sent or spoken to the council as a body, and everybody has five minutes to do so.
Please, if you would, write your name on the paper. If it's not already there, along with your phone number, provide your name and area of residence, please.
Jeff Jacobson, 391 Vanelle Drive, North Pole, Alaska. I'm here to comment on what I feel is a lack of public notice for the special meeting. I, when you look at the agendas for the month of November, on the November 3rd meeting, the budget ordinance said introduce in advance November 3rd, November 2nd reading November 17th, and final reading and adoption December 1st. On the agenda that was, that's posted for the November 17th meeting, the budget ordinance date stayed the same. Introduce in advance November 3rd, 2nd reading November 17th, and final reading and adoption December 1st. No public notice was given at last week's meeting, early in the, in the meeting when we were all here, that you were going to advance the budget final adoption to today. So I don't understand why you have to have a special meeting to adopt a budget that was posted for the month of November to be finalized on December 1st. And if there was a conflict of schedules because people are going to be out of town, you had your second meeting in December in which to adopt this budget. But I really feel that this was, this is disingenuous, borderline unethical, and it's opaque, not transparent, when you do this short notice turnaround. On the city webpage, over the weekend, it said, "proposed meeting." Proposed means thinking about it, gonna talk about it, haven't decided, and instead, it's the final budget meeting. I don't think that's right. Also, this special meeting is costing the city over $500, plus all the employees who are here. What justifies that? And then also, there was a lot of scrutiny over the $54 per diem request by the mayor. I would like as much scrutiny on the $1,200 dishwasher that was installed here at City Hall. I don't know why the small amount of dishes that are here needs a $1,200 dishwasher. Also, I hope that you have a fiscal note now on what the increased wages are going to be for the city services department. So when you pass tonight's budget, you know how much money that department needs and where's that money coming from. Those are my comments.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Oh, excuse me. Just question, sir. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody else that would like to speak this evening during citizens' comments? Please step forward. Add your name to the paper, if you will, your phone number, first and last name, and area of residence, please.
Good evening. My name is Elena Miller and my address is 125 Snowman Lane. After hearing the officers speak at the last council meeting, I felt it was important to come tonight and add my own perspective to theirs. I'm not here as a police officer, but as someone who has spent the last four years on the other end of the radio, first as a 911 dispatcher and now as an evidence custodian here at the police department. My perspective is a little different from those out patrolling the streets, but it's shaped by the same reality. Policing in this community has changed. It's become more complex, more unpredictable, and more dangerous. I've been the person sitting in a dispatch center, listening for an officer not answer their radio, just sitting there waiting, wondering if this is the time that they don't make it home. I've reviewed enough of their body cam footage to understand just how fast simple seeming situations can change. Traffic stops turning violent, domestic disputes escalating in seconds. A routine call turns into a fight for their life before they can even radio for help. The stories that were shared to you by these officers and their spouses were not just distant hypotheticals that might happen. They were real events our officers have already experienced, often alone and with the ultimate fear for their safety in mind. What hasn't changed is this: backup saves lives, and right now, our officers don't have enough of it. The discussion surrounding funding for an additional officer position, funding that would allow us consistent double coverage, directly impacts the safety of every officer in this department, and quite frankly, our community too. Our officers are responding alone to unpredictable situations in a community that continues to grow and change, and not in a good way. I mean, have you guys seen the news over the last few meet, few weeks? It's been terrifying. There's going to be more moments where help isn't just a few minutes away, it's going to be too far away. I also want to offer my own perspective connecting this to the recently passed ordinance 2025-15, amending the city services pay scale to address pay inequities and promote retention within the city's critical infrastructure positions. The sponsors of this ordinance highlight that the city values consistency and longevity and recognizes that these critical, critical roles require years of training and commitment. Those principles apply directly to our police department as well. These sponsors were able to pass long-term pay adjustments for other critical infrastructure staff, yet the department who is responsible for the immediate safety of this community, the people who are responding alone, at risk and on understaffed shifts, are being continued to ask, to, being asked to continue operating without double coverage, which is something that is crucial in today's law enforcement world. I bring this up not as a criticism, but as context. The same logic that was used to justify the recent pay adjustments also supports the need for proper staffing in our police department. The ability to retain trained officers, prevent burnout, and ensure their safety through adequate coverage is just as vital to the stability and future of our city. I know there's a lot you must take into account while doing the budget over these next few years, but I'm also asking you to look beyond the numbers on your spreadsheet and consider the human element. These officers deserve to go home to their families. Their families deserve peace of mind. And our community here in North Pole deserves a police department that's adequately staffed to meet the needs and realities of today's society, not yesterday's.
Any questions? Yes, Councilman Claus.
Thank you. Since you had been on dispatch and now doing the custodial work, I presume and being related, I presume you kept up with the recent calls for service. I was going to hear about it from our Chief Smith, but since you're here and since you've addressed this particular issue, I'm wondering if you could let the councilmen know a little bit more about your perspective on what's happened in the city here during the last week, not just over the month or so, but the week, if you would like.
So just in the last week, and it's not necessarily the city specifically, but if you take into account the entire interior, because without that double coverage, we are relying on other agencies to help. So in the last week, you've had two homicides and attempted murder, I believe, two suicides. We had that case of terroristic threatening here in the city where even AST came out and responded. And that, let alone in just a week, is terrifying for anybody. The community, our officers that have to respond, it's, it's become out of hand.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here. Thank you for your testimony. Any other citizens like to leave comments? Please add your name and phone number to the paper and then state your first and last name and area of residence, please.
My name is Tasman Gregory. I'm a detective sergeant currently employed by the North Pole Police Department. I'm assigned the major crimes detective. I'm here speaking to you today as I was unable to attend with my fellow officers last week to further add to the concern regarding officer safety that they currently face. I've been with the North Pole Police Department for over two years now, and I've worked with, worked countless nights by myself. Coming from a larger department where backup was minutes away, I have learned it was a luxury compared to this area. I have had conversations with myself I did not think I would ever have to have in regards to if things go south, who would I call? The answer? Troopers. And the response time, if they're able to spare the manpower, is 20 minutes. I was promoted to my current position in this past summer. My main duties are to investigate the major crimes that occur within the city of North Pole. I can tell you most of those crimes consist of cases involving sexual, sexual abuse of a minor. These types of cases require a lot of time, attention, patience, and sometimes coordination with other departments. Due to the lack of double coverage, I have been required to assist in covering the patrol shift multiple times. This causes a delay in my ability to investigate my assigned cases, which could cause a loss in very important time-sensitive evidence. I currently have 11 cases assigned to me that require different levels of attention, but I am unable to properly investigate them while I am covering patrol. Responding to calls and enforcing traffic takes up most of my day, and it negatively, in fact, impacts the cases I work. I want to be able to help the victims in these cases, and I have found the, the courage to speak up and report the evil things that have happened to them. Sorry. I want to help the victims in these cases and have found that it takes a lot of courage for them to speak up about those evil things. If I'm constantly being pulled from my assigned duties to cover patrol, I'm failing those victims. I ask that you please consider the idea of making continuous progress within the police department and moving towards having double coverage on every shift. With the current state of society, it could have devastating effects if we are not able to properly adapt and grow with the needs of our citizens. Any questions?
Any questions for the citizen? Yes, Councilman Claus.
Detective Sergeant, would it be accurate to say that the two most dangerous calls police officers can respond to are either domestic violence or traffic stops, for the most part?
Yes, sir.
And that's when I gather the coverage is important and...
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, one more thing.
Sure.
With respect to the investigations, I presume if a child has been abused and you're trying to document the case, whether they have been or haven't been, that that's also a key element in trying to expedite the case through the court system as well as child protective services, that they rely on your report.
Of course. We always try to complete an investigation to the point where that victim does not have to testify, and it's hard if I'm constantly covering patrol.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here. Thank you for your testimony. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else? Please add your name and phone number to the list. State your first and last name and area of residence, please.
Hello, members of the council and Mayor Church. My name is Rachel Wing. My address is 125 Snowman Lane, and I would like to speak to you today as both a resident of the city of North Pole and an employee of the North Pole Police Department since 2018. I served as the Evidence and Records Custodian until 2023, and then I took the position of Executive Assistant to the Chief of Police. I would like to say that I am alarmed, to say the least, to hear discussions about the possibility of removing a current staffing position for the North, for North Pole police officers. Officers are spread too thin as it is with our current staffing numbers. It is not uncommon for officers to be on patrol alone and must respond to situations that could escalate violently at any moment. Any situation, even benign as a routine traffic stop, could potentially turn violent in a heartbeat. Police officers must be ever vigilant and can never put their guard down, both to prevent danger to the public and to ensure their own safety. When an officer needs backup, they need it now. Mere seconds can mean the difference between a life and death situation. Imagine facing that kind of pressure constantly. It takes a toll on a person, and that is what we ask our officers to do on a daily basis. Not only to face that pressure, but to act professionally, to live up to extremely high standards, and to treat people with compassion. Every day, I see our officers deal with people going through some of their worst moments, and I am always in awe of how respectful and gracious they are, even when they are being insulted or even physically attacked. It's a tough job. They deserve at minimum the reassurance to know that they've got someone close by that has their back if situations go awry at a moment's notice. Understaffing our police is a dangerous proposition, not only for them, but for you, the citizens of our community. Ideally, the police should have enough staffing for consistent, if not double, if not consistent double, if not triple coverage. Officers are humans too. They sometimes must call in sick to work or have family emergencies or take a well-deserved vacation. I love living in the city of North Pole and I love working for the city of North Pole. It's a charming town that feels safe. It feels safe because our police have a consistent presence. We need to keep that consistency. We need consistency and longevity with well-trained officers. Not having enough officers to have consistent backup takes a toll on our officer's morale and could potentially impact officer retention. Retention is so important in maintaining community safety and trust, preserving institutional knowledge, and building an experienced and cohesive police force. I hope you consider all these things while making decisions that impact the safety of our community. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you for your testimony. Thank you for being here. You would put your name and phone number on the sheet, first and last name, and area- First and last name and area of residence, please.
Good evening, council and mayor. This is Chandra Clack, 820 Refinery Loop. Thank you very much for hearing me tonight, and I'm hoping not to stay too long. I've heard a lot of stuff on your councils the last couple of weeks, and it's kind of upsetting a little bit, being a citizen, past council member and perhaps mayor, seeing some of the things that you're wanting to cut on budget and some of the things that you are discussing without giving more thought to the citizens here. The protection that we need, it, as I was being on council to help get more police officers. One of the young ladies spoke of the crime that is going on and the police and the state troopers that had to respond. One of the young ladies that was killed, I happen to have known, and that was very heartbreaking to hear and see. I don't want to see that out here, knowing that we have a lot of new people coming in, and we don't know exactly who and what we have coming into North Pole. We do need to protect our community. So I hope you do pay attention to our budget and make sure that we do keep and bring on more police officers to protect our community. I feel, and I've mentioned this several times, even in our council and with the past mayors, that when we get on publicly like this and discuss that we're cutting police officers and we don't have enough police officers, that we're opening up our community to theft and homicides and things like that. So I hope that with this discussion that you are willing to go ahead and pass the budget that we need. As Jeff brought up, the other thing of my concern was that doing this meeting tonight without enough notice for the changes that took place, that was also kind of disheartening as well. There was not enough notice to say that this meeting was going to take place. So that way, the public would be aware that there was going to be a meeting tonight to discuss whatever you hope to discuss and changes of the council for budget. Sometimes when I watch your meetings, it seems to be more of a, not too much of a discussion, but almost a debate of an argument or close to it. And it's like we are not settling enough of courtesy to one another, and I'd like to see a little bit more of that come through. The other thing that some of people approached me about is that they're not, the cameras are not coming around to see whoever's speaking. And that's also another concern that I have, that these people are approaching me and they can't tell when they're watching YouTube who's actually speaking. So they would like to see that being taken care of. So when you're speaking to your staff to the right of me, that you're able to zoom in, especially if you have new people coming to town, that they'll be able to recognize who is talking. It's just, to me, a common courtesy when you're watching your YouTube and not looking up at your screens above your head or the pictures on the wall. So if we can take all these things and sum this up and be able to help our public, I think this would be good. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Any questions?
Yes.
What particular cuts have you heard us talking about that you are opposed to?
Well, I'm concerned about your budget cuts. Well, really, to be honest with you, when you decided to increase on utilities, when that was brought up, you end up bringing up more cuts or more debate, I would say, for the departments. We've already gone through that when I first came on council. So when you increased certain departments and you did not increase other departments for their longevity, you did the same thing. We're gonna, you're gonna end up having debates among your staff about why not for attention and longevity, okay? They, some of the people that you've elected to do this with have already gone through this a couple of years ago while I was still in, okay? So that, I can tell you right now, is gonna bring on heartache if you have not already heard it. All right? The budget, as far as the police department, if you're going to cut somebody in that department and not bring anybody in, as she said, it is a protective aspect. They don't want to go out there and not be protected. This is very serious. Things have changed a lot. Our younger generation now do not care about life. They have no fear, bottom line. So that's very important as well. So we don't want to lose any of our officers for any reason, okay? So those are some of my concerns on that front. Yes.
I'll allow, go ahead, Councilman Brandt.
I don't recall anybody talking at any of our budget meetings whatsoever about cutting any staff on the police department, do you?
It's not that part of that, but listening to what you're trying to do now from what the young ladies were discussing tonight, if you're thinking about doing anything in your budget and not bringing more police officers or whatnot in, that would be the concern there?
Are you aware that in this budget, we're adding a police officer that we have not had since Chief Dutre retired?
That part I am not aware of, so thank you for pointing that out.
Any other questions? Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for being here this evening.
One more thing. Can you explain why this other part was not put out earlier to let everybody know about it today?
I'd love to answer.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Anyone else this evening?
I just wanted to point out that the special meeting was called after the last council meeting, and it has been noticed on the website and in the foyer as the 2026 proposed budget since the morning after the council meeting. And I, and if you go to how to and go to agendas and minutes, the agenda, the agenda packet for this meeting has been also out since the, it was later Tuesday evening that I got it posted on the city's website. I just wanted to point out alternative ways to find that information.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. And then per city code, the meeting has been called by Councilman Claus, Councilman Schuster, Councilwoman Rolf, and Councilman Brandt. Per our city code, we're required to have that stated, so I wanted to make sure we took care of that and got that out of the way. With that, I'd like to close, council, or I'm sorry, citizens' comments, and move on to Special Orders, item number seven. Madam Clerk, for special orders this evening. Do you have any special orders of the evening, ma'am?
I do. It is ordinance, it is the ordinance.
Okay. Item 7A, could I get an ordinance motion, please, on ordinance 2025-13?
Moved to reintroduce ordinance 2025-13, ordinance of the North Pole City Council establishing the operating and capital budget levying the mill rate.
Second.
So moved in second, and thank you for that. Staff report, we have the ordinance up. It has been disclosed now. I believe this is the third meeting it has been disclosed.
Just also, in an abundance of caution, because I did not know what would be, what would come out of this evening. So I also have a fourth reading on the December 1st agenda. So this is gonna have a, what I'm, what I'm guessing is going to be a fourth reading on next Monday evening. Our publishing deadline changed, so I published that agenda last Friday.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. With that, our CFO is here this evening. I know in our last meeting, we went through the budget category by category. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down, we did have some questions that we would like to have the CFO address. And if council wants to be noticed and have that addressed, we certainly can by the CFO. Honestly, Councilman Brandt, I don't know if it would be appropriate or not, but I'll allow it.
I was going to say to Jeff and Chandra, we are not approving the budget tonight. That's not our intention. It's an additional meeting to the budget. Our CFO has been gone for two of the four weeks that we have to go over this budget. She was not here for the last meeting. We had a lot of questions that only she could answer. We didn't want to wait until the next meeting to ask a question and then her maybe not being able to answer it. So that gives her another week to reply to these questions. We are not approving the, I didn't write that. Okay, well, I did not write that. That is not what I, I emailed about this, this meeting. The, 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 the next meeting, the budget is still going to be on the next meeting. That will be...
A point of order, you can't, I'm sorry, point of order. You really can't say whether it's gonna be approved or on the next meeting or not unless you've already had a meeting about what you're going to do this evening.
That was my intention when the four of us called this meeting. That was our intention.
The heading is, this is how it is on the website also.
Okay, so thank you for that, Councilman Brandt. You said that you had some questions for our CFO. She is here this evening along with our deputy accountant. Thank you both and all for being here this evening to answer council questions. Councilman Brandt, since you spoke up about having some questions, where would you like to start, sir?
Well, how do we go about proposing changes to the budget? Do we just make a motion? Is that how we do that?
We certainly could. Yep, it's been first and seconded. So we can start with amendments if you'd like, or if you wanted a presentation from Madam CFO about the questions that you had in our prior meeting, we certainly can address those or take them one by one.
I think we're pretty much gonna go through every department again. Go ahead.
Just a request, if...
Actually, yes, go ahead.
Sorry.
Councilman Schuster.
Sorry. Just a request, if, when you're making amendments, if you could just reference page number, it'd be helpful to follow along.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to...
Councilman Brandt.
I'd like to make a motion to change all of the legal fees throughout the, the budget in every department back to last year's budget.
Councilman Brandt, you'll have to make those independently throughout each department. So where would you like to start, sir?
Okay, well, we'll start with admin. So admin page 36, line, well, 015122250, legal fees. Last year's, uh, last year's budget, we budgeted $5,000. This year's budget, they're asking for $60,000. Has anybody bothered to go through the budget and add up all the legal fees?
Actually, you said you'd like to make a motion, sir.
Okay.
So you need to speak very clearly to the motion?
I would like to move to reduce the legal fee from $60,000 back to $5,000.
So moved in second, and now, questions?
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
I do have a question.
Yeah, Councilman Schuster.
Just for clarification, Mr. Brandt, we're in the admin budget, correct?
Correct.
I show legal fees of 642709, was budgeted last year. 615209 is what was reported. Well, that's, yeah, go ahead.
I have spent a lot of time going through all these numbers, and a lot of these numbers are incorrect. The budget last year, the council-approved appropriation was for $5,000. I don't know where $6,427.09 came from. That is not what we budgeted last year. I have the budget right here if, if you'd like to see that.
Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind scrolling to page 36, please. So those people online are able to follow that. Yes, if you would, please, into the 2026 proposed budget to page 36, the administration budget.
Just, just to make a little clarification, that probably, that's what was the original budget. This, this column here reflects any fiscal notes or admin transfers between categories. So this is not, what you're seeing is not the original budget. It's the budget that's gone through all the fiscal notes and administrative budget amendments.
Thank you for that, Madam CFO. Councilman Brandt.
Yeah, and I, and I did go back through all of those fiscal notes and everything, and I don't see even how that adds up to 642709, so I don't know.
I can take a double look at it. The one that's in play is not posted yet. It's not approved.
Right, so my intention is to go back to the appropriated budget from last year. And I went through the entire budget and added up all the legal fees that this budget is asking for this year. $160,500 we're asking for legal fees in this budget. Last year, we asked for $37,0750. Last year, we used, in the 2025, or, okay, so if we go back to 2024, we budgeted for $31,750. We used $18,732.50. This year, from January to June, we used $7,770. From July through October, $34,822. We can't afford this lawyer anymore. We can't keep going down this path. I made copies of, of all this so everybody can see it. I went line by line through the 24 and the 25 budget, what the council appropriated for every single department, and then what we actually used from the numbers that Ms. Fogarty gave us when we were hiring the lawyer for 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024.
Councilman Brandt, before you distribute that, have you actually checked those figures and facts with our CFO before you distribute inappropriate information that maybe hasn't been certified? That's your, your math, maybe not CFO math. I just want to clarify so that we understand where that information is coming from.
All of these numbers come from the budget. So our budgets for, from 2018 to now are posted on our website as long as, along with our audits. And I've spent hundreds of hours going through the budgets and audits and studying this, this budget front to back. The actuals that I have here are from Tricia's email, and I put that right down here, that she sent to all council members back in May when we were looking at determining who we were gonna hire for lawyer. And then the other numbers come directly, the numbers for this year come directly from the lawyer bills that, that Ms. Fogarty sent to each one of us.
Okay, so did you run that sheet by the CFO before you're distributing your math?
No.
Okay. I just need to clarify, okay? I see no reason not to distribute your perception of our budget. I appreciate the time that you took going through that. Any other discussion on the motion to adjust the legal fees? Okay, seeing none. For that adjustment, would anybody like to publicly comment about that? It's a, no point of order needed. It is a special meeting, and as part of the special meeting, we're gonna accept public comments for every amendment that's made to this budget. So, thank you. Please.
Jeff Jacobson, 391 Fenell Drive.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm not sure if the city has it where in your fiscal budget books where you have the adopted budget and then the actual budget that gets trued up at the end of the year so that you can see really where were your dollars spent? Because when you forecast a budget in November for the next 13 months or 12 months, things happen. And so you're always moving money around from one account or another, getting grants, adjusting that in, spending less in one account and having to transfer that over. So if you just stick with what's adopted as the budget in December, it's not going to be how the money was spent that year. So you have to be looking at what was the actual budget numbers. And I don't know if the city does that like the City of Fairbanks has. They have two columns for every year, what was budgeted and what was the actual, so that you could track the changes. So I would encourage you not to lower the legal fees to $5,000 because one council member already burned up $1,000. So that doesn't leave much for any review of ordinances from the administration.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Any further discussion on this amendment? Yes, Councilman Brandt.
So I did go through the audits, not just the budgets. The budgets tell us what we think is going to happen. The audits tell us what really did happen. These numbers come directly from the audits, not from the budget, because the budget numbers are not accurate. The audit numbers are accurate. The audited number for the legal fees last year was $18,732.50, according to our CFO. That was with a lawyer charging us $350 an hour. The lawyer that we hired now is $200 an hour, and he's cost us, in two months, more than we paid the entire year last year. Either we get a new lawyer or he has to do better. Either way, our taxpayers cannot continue down this road. We cannot pay $160,500 next year for attorney fees. My intention here is to go back. If you look at the pages here, pretty consistent, the last 2024 and 2025 budget, right around $30,000 both years. We didn't use that. In 2023, we used $32,754 in 2020. And there was something, I don't know what it was, there was $10,000 in public works that year that I don't know what that was. And then 2024 is $18,732. And like I said, from January to June this year with our previous attorney, we spent less than $8,000. In the first month of our new attorney, we spent $10,000. So this particular attorney is not working out for us. I'm hoping that we can move on from him and lower the legal fees for the taxpayers of North Pole.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? A step forward.
As far as your attorney fees and looking at what you have for the last couple of years, my thought would be that you've had the same attorney for at least 17 years, and he is accustomed to North Pole. You guys acquired a new individual, and he is trying to get accustomed to North Pole and your codes and how you guys work. He's also trying to get accustomed to who you guys are, okay? So with that being said, how often you call him and hearing that you spent $1,000 right off the cuff, knowing that factor, that would also bring your bill up. You have to be conscious of who makes the calls and how long you're on the phone with this gentleman. Again, as I'm stating, he is new. You're trying to get adjusted. And to any organization, it takes time for somebody to get used to something. It seems like this gentleman is well-diverse in counsel and AML and trying to help all the way around. Okay? So those are my thoughts on the subject.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the past mayor experience that you, both of you, were able to speak to. I have a question, if I may bring up... Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Claus, please.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I've noticed with respect to the legal fees is when we initially engaged at this particular law firm, we were told that this particular attorney was going to be assigned to our city primarily, was going to occasionally consult with other attorneys in the firm without double billing. So what I've seen is sometimes the attorney who's assigned to us will contact another attorney who maybe have more experience or be specialized in a particular area. And then we're getting billed by the attorney who's supposed to be helping us, plus the attorney that they're consulting with, rather than just the attorney they're consulting with who's actually providing the useful information. So I think that's probably one of the elements why the costs are going up and one of the contingents I might have with respect to the firm. But thank you.
I appreciate you mentioning that. And in our last meeting, I think the attorney spoke very poignantly to that fact that you go to a doctor and your regular doctor refers you out to a specialist. You don't not get billed by the first doctor because Doctor One has referred you to a specialist. And then, Councilman Brandt, during all of your research into our attorney and the charges just based on the cost, were you able to also predicate the amount of work that the attorney was doing? Were you able to call our past attorney and ask him how many times he did work for the city based on our current attorney bills?
I have...
Please, Councilman Brandt.
I have copies of the last six months of the attorney's bills. So yes, I did go over all of that.
I understand, but you're arguing that per-year mathematics that our prior attorney costs less than our current attorney, which by the hour is not correct, but by the cost per year, according to your method, is. Were you able to reach out to our prior attorney and see how much work he did for the City of North Pole based on the actual tasks that were given to him versus the actual tasks that we have from our current attorney and use that also as a judgment in between the fees? Or are you just strictly looking at the numbers?
Again, I looked at the detailed lawyer bills for the last six months with tells us exactly what he's working on and what he's charging us for it. And I looked at the last four months of our current attorney. We are... He takes far longer to do stuff than our previous attorney did. We asked him a simple question, apparently, and he wrote a four-page memo that cost us $1,000. We didn't ask him to write that memo. He wrote the memo and charged us $1,000 for a memo to answer a simple question. That's the kind of thing that this attorney is doing, that the previous attorney did not do, that... So... This is really simple. We can't pay $160,500, $160,500 next year for an attorney. That's absolutely outrageous.
Please, Mayor. Councilman Schuster.
I agree with the principle of reducing it. I think 5,000 is probably a little much. I would propose 10 or a little less. I would propose 10. I do believe that...
Actually, you can't propose. We already have a motion on the table.
Yeah, I guess I didn't mean an actual proposal.
Okay. Yeah, and you can speak to your desire, which is fine. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but...
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, we can't have a second motion on the floor when we already have one.
Yeah, yeah. It was not a real proposal.
Understood.
So I think I would be more comfortable with that number, just because I do believe in a learning curve. I would like to see that number decrease, but I do believe in a learning curve. And I think 17 years working with the city is important in that cost. And so I would just like to figure an additional, I think 35,000 is way too much, but I would like to see a little bit more.
Please, Councilman Brandt.
Oh, I don't agree with the learning curve thing. If we were to pick up the phone and call a random attorney out of the phone book and ask him a question about our code, it would take him a matter of minutes to look it up on our website and being able to interpret it. And same thing with these contracts that we give him for approval that he takes. I don't... I don't have all my notes on it here tonight, but I will at the next meeting. It takes far too long to approve a simple contract. He spent six and a half hours, I think, going over the... What's it, the snow remove? No, not the snow remove, but the paving contract. And I've actually... Actual attorneys showed them the previous contract and the changes he made, and they said, no, it should not have taken six and a half hours to do that. And so...
If I may, if you're going to mention specifics and specific facts with hours and time, if you can have your big backup data with you, you can certainly speak to the item and the issue that you have with the item, but let's not get off in the weeds to specifics of everything. Councilman Schuster.
And I don't... I'm not disagreeing with you. I just think if the desire to move on or whatever is there, I do believe that it's going to take a new attorney just to get accustomed with how we're doing things. I'm not saying that's a year-long process, but, you know, the first two or three months, certainly, I expect, until they're familiar with how we operate, to be a little bit higher.
Councilman Brandt. Please.
This particular attorney is fresh out of law school, and I don't think he's up to the task. We gave him a chance. We gave him four months. He's charged us, you know, $35,000 so far in four months. I don't want the taxpayers of North Pole to keep paying for his on-the-job training. I think we would be better moving on, going to an attorney that has a lot of municipal experience, and this bill will come back down to where it was previously, I'm confident, regardless of whether, you know... I know Zane worked for us for 17-plus years. But you don't need to know our code inside out to answer a question about our code. See what I'm saying?
I do see what you're...
Please, Councilman Schuster. Thank you. Through the chair, if you will, please. I know I will allow us some leniency in debate because I think it's super important, but let's keep our discussions for brevity. We're almost an hour in, and we're on, still on the First Amendment. This could be a very long night. So, please, Councilman Schuster.
I'll pass.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
On the amendment to decrease the legal fee for the admin budget from $60,000 to $5,000 for ordinance 25, 2025-13, Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
No.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
No.
That passed with a five to two.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
I'm sorry, I should have said that afterwards, Mayor.
It's quite all right. It's going to be a busy night. Okay. We are still in the administration budget. Councilman Brandt.
Can we just go down all the legal fees since we have this in front of us right now?
I would really like to work through each one of our budgets as we see fit, just so that we're not bouncing through different budgets, if you wouldn't mind.
If I may, real quick.
Certainly. Councilman Brandt, you certainly may.
Everybody has this piece of paper right in front of them. All of the numbers that I'm going to propose are right in front of us here. It would be a better use of our time right now to just... We've had the debate on whether or not we want to lower the fees. Can we please just go down this list and make these changes and then go on to...
No, sir, I'm sorry, you can't. Please, Councilman Skips.
I was going to say, since Councilman Brandt brought this up with this sheet of paper, I mean, I'd feel better if Trish had a chance to look at this and double-check these figures and make sure, you know, if she comes back and says, oh, yep, everything's good, then I will feel comfortable looking at these numbers.
I...
I understand that...
I understand. I gave her a copy.
Excuse me, please, through the chair, sir.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. It was your time.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I would feel completely comfortable if Trish says, yep, these are good numbers, then I'll feel good about it. But unless Trish gets a chance to look at it and confirm everything, then I'm kind of... Where Trish is.
Just at the glance, Michelle pointed this out, that your column, David, at least the first four, you're using the department head's budget, not the mayor's budget.
For 2026?
Yes.
All of them are department heads' budgets for 2026.
Okay, but what is proposed and on the table is the mayor's budget. That's what's in the ordinance page.
Okay, I wasn't aware that...
Okay.
Okay, so the numbers to the right are all the department head's numbers. I do not have the mayor's numbers to the right. But the numbers for 2025 budget and 2024 budget are the ones that were the council-appropriated numbers...
That's correct.
Passed from the ordinance.
Okay. We are still on the administration budget. Please, Councilwoman Rolf.
I have a question on the administration budget. Underline item for health insurance, so it's 0151-1-0130, in the, I guess, the proposed budget, your number is double the expenditures year-to-date for 2025. Can you explain that?
Madam CFO, please.
The requested budget from... That I put together was $97,600.
Right, but the mayor's... You just told us that the budget in front of us per code is the mayor's proposed numbers. The mayor's proposed number for health insurance is $148,000.
$148,000, yes.
And I'm just trying to figure out why there's...
After we put this together, there was some changes to his budget based off my replacement.
Okay, and your replacement will increase the insurance by that much?
Well, you're going to pay insurance for that person and me until I'm out the door.
That's in addition of one person, and it's doubling the current year-to-date total.
I'd have to go through the math again. These are the numbers that we set to put away for ourselves. It's not a bill. It's something that we set in that healthcare fund to pay for the cost of the healthcare plus any claims that are submitted.
No, I mean, I guess I understand that, but if I'm... Correct me if I'm wrong, administration budget accounts for currently four individuals.
That's correct.
When you announce your retirement and we hire the new person for a period of a couple of months, there'll be a fifth individual, and the proposed budget adds $50,000 from what yours does for one individual, whereas the whole department last year of four people was only $88,000. I just don't understand that.
Could take a look at the number again.
So I believe that the number that we had in there was four months over coverage between the new CFO and the old CFO as we train, cross-train, and get our new CFO up to speed. I believe that number is... I believe when we adjusted that, four months. I can't speak surely to that, but that's what I'm recollecting from memory. Please, Councilman Brandt.
I can say that I did ask a question of Ms. Fogarty, and she told me you had recommended three months overlap, and she recommended two months overlap.
And I think now that you're saying four, I think that, you know, that the conversation went back and... went back and forth for a few days and I think Mayor Church is correct. I think he wanted four.
Councilman Brandt.
I will say if we need four months overlap, then we hired the wrong person. That's far, far too much.
Got to hire somebody first.
I know, but, but four, four months overlap is, if we hire a qualified CFO, won't take them four months to, to get up to speed.
Yeah.
Actually, if she had something she wanted to say, she would be recognized by the chair, sir.
I was wondering if she was making a motion or not. If she wasn't, then I was going to.
I don't know if you can really inspire her to make a motion. I think that's a, a real issue. If you'd like to make a motion yourself, Councilman Brandt, you're more than welcome to, but calling out another council person, asking them to make a motion for you is not allowed here, sir.
That was not my intention. I was not going to step.
Understood.
toes if she was making a motion. You said that you were going to be a little bit more lax this evening. I was just trying to give her an opportunity to make her motion. So if we can move on, I move that we, we, so right now, what's on the table is the mayor's budget, correct? Not the, the requested budget.
That is what is in ordinance. Yes, sir.
Okay, so I will, I will make a motion to change the health insurance in the admin budget from $148,000 to the department head requested $97,600.
A second.
Discussion on that. So moved and seconded. Okay, seen none. Oh, hold on. Councilman Skips.
So the 97, that is for currently how many employees? Is that four?
Yes, sir.
Four. So then there's no wiggle room to where if you get a new CEO coming in, there's no extra, there's no overlapping funds then for that person, correct? If we keep it at 97?
That would be correct and it's the CFO, not the CEO.
I thought I meant CFO.
But that may happen as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any further debate or questions on that? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Deuce, last minute. Councilman Schuster.
Sorry. Just one more question for clarification on that. There was overlap in the 97, two months, correct?
Sorry, if you wouldn't mind into the mic or a little louder, just so that we can have that on the record.
That 93, what we need, what we need exactly.
Okay.
Employees.
And requested from department head was, through the chair, was 97,600. And so there probably is a couple of month overlap in there?
It's two months.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Well, look three times, like pulling out from a stop sign here. Check both ways. Please call the roll.
On the amendment that would decrease the admin budget healthcare from 148,000 to 97,600 in ordinance 2025-13, Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote?
And that motion passed six to one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Brandt.
So that's going to change. So I'm, I'm looking at the wages full-time also. So I, I have emailed back and forth with Ms. Fogard on this and there, there's two things I want to bring up with that. So the wage calculator that she shared with everybody here assumes that she gets a three-step increase this year, but she only gets a one-step because she does not get a professional development step increase this year. Is that correct?
Yeah, I got that this year, so I would get a 1.5% as, as for code.
Right, but you would not get the additional two steps that you have in the wage calculator.
No, that came after this got put together.
Right, so the wages that are in here are already high and at that, the wages come to 346, 590 and 40 cents. And that's, that's with her increase. So I did not recalculate it to the two-step below. I left that there. So we also need to assume that when we hire a CFO, they will not be at the same step that our current one is. So the new CFO presumably will be making less money. So if we hire a new person in, I, I don't know what your timeframe is, but let's just say April. So there, there's going to be eight months of a lower-wage employee and six months of their current-wage employees. So the lower-wage will probably be offset by the two months overlap. So what I'm trying to get at is I, I think the, the number that we came up in, that you came up in the wage calculator should be sufficient to cover the entire year for the current CFO plus the replacement plus the two-month overlap. I, I went around and round and round about the, on this. And so the 346, 590 seems like enough even with two months overlap. So just to be safe, I would say 350. So I'm going to propose that we, we lower the, the wages, full-time wages from the mayor's proposed 370 to $350,000.
A second.
So moved and seconded. Discussion on this. Councilman Brandt, sure.
The only thing I have to say about that is if we do change that, you'll probably have to wait till the last, the next meeting because all the other numbers will have to change too. And that's something that, that you'll have to run through your calculators.
So anyone else? Public testimony on this item.
Jeff Jacobson, CFOs qualified, they need to step into a job, you're not going to get for anything lower than what's already in the budget. City, Fairbanks, Dusterboro has gone years trying to find accountants to fill their positions and they're not a single CFO for the entire city like ours is. And so I think when you go out there, you're going to get what you pay for. If you want somebody who can really run and not make mistakes with our system, it's going to cost you. That is a very high-demand occupation. In fact, several of the large accounting firms in Fairbanks had to merge because there wasn't enough accountants for both companies because they had gaps in their, in their employment positions. So you can wish that you're going to get somebody for a lesser amount. I think you're going to find out it's going to be much more expensive just because of the demand and supply and demand in, in accounting.
Thank you. Any further comment on this? I would like to weigh in. I do have some questions about why this amendments didn't happen during our budget presentations and budget workshops where we would have had time to dissect and understand this information much sooner than at a special meeting. And then I also would like to speak a little bit to full-time wages, similar to what Mr. Jacobson said. Accountants are not cheap to hire and neither are attorneys. Certified people cost money. And to predicate our city to having to find someone in a certain wage bracket because our council feels that it shouldn't be that much will cause us to have to do an adjustment in our budget to hire someone possibly to replace our CFO. It has been talked about on previous budget adjustments in this very room with these very same council people, that we can move the money, it just doesn't have to be spent. I truly believe that that applies to this very one category. Anyone else like to say anything? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the adjustment to the admin department wages from 370,000 to 350,000 on ordinance 2025-13, Mr. Williams?
Yes, bringing it down.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. Skips?
No.
Mayor Church?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote?
That motion passed four to three.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brandt.
I would like to ask our CFO, because we did not have the answer to this at the last meeting, professional services went from $1,500 up to $17,000. Is that for the cleaning?
Can you repeat the question? I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Professional services in the admin budget went from 1,500 up to 17,000.
Oh, right. We put in the cleaning service, just.
So currently, as a trial basis, they're cleaning three times a week, two hours, two people an hour each, three times a week. The discussion that we had during the budget sessions was they would come once a week. Is once a week adequate from what you've seen that they, they do?
They're doing a very good job right now. I don't see why we can't go down to once or twice a week. I think we were going to wait till the end of the year to kind of make that decision.
We have to.
This, this is fully loaded. You know, it's a budget to kind of prepare for what we, we might use, but if we don't use it, the money gets unspent.
And if I may point out, by your own accord, Councilman Brandt, she's been gone the last two weeks, so she doesn't know the full effect of our cleaning people. So asking her to speak to that may not be the best judge. Please, Councilman Brandt for a follow-up.
Tim, would you mind speaking to that?
I don't see any reason why we couldn't bring them down to, to one or two days.
And what, what would that cost at the, the current?
It's hard to say because they don't have an itemized invoice they're giving us. It's just a number. So if they're, there's, there's times where you, companies just can't go any lower, right? They're not going to charge us $20 a month because we want them to come for two minutes a day, right? There, there's, there's a minimum amount that a company's going to charge us and I don't know what that is, right? If we say we want one person to come out here for one hour, once a week, they might just say, no, it's not worth our time to, to come out. So I don't want to try to predict what, what they're going to say. My, my intent was to have them run a full month and then in December, talk to them about what they're willing to do and then come back with real numbers.
Okay, well.
Right now, it's $1,400 a month.
Right, I was going to say currently we're paying $1,400 a month to clean three times a week.
Right.
So if we think we can get by with one or two times a week, it would be considerably lower than $1,400 a month.
If, if their estimate was correct.
Okay.
Right, I mean, it is possible that they made a poor choice saying that they would do it for $1,400, right? I mean, it's, it's a lot to have them come out three times a week, four weeks, if they're not actually based here in North Pole or if they're not working in North Pole at that time and they have to drive 30 minutes out and 30 minutes back. I don't, I don't know how their, their business works.
Okay.
Did you have a additional follow-up question, Councilman Brandt?
No, I think $1,400 a month cleaning three times a week with two people is a little bit excessive for, for a city hall. Our public works cleaned only twice a week. So I would, I would recommend going back to twice a week. So that would be.
They clean between the two buildings, five days.
Pardon? Oh, I, I thought Cody said they clean police three times a week and, and city hall twice a week, but on the, every, every time they came out to PD, they just came in and checked in if it needed something.
Right, I think, I think they said they, they deep-clean twice a week here and three times a week over there, but they, I believe they go in and clean every day.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion or questions about that? Madam Clerk, will you remind us where we're at? I'm sorry, I got lost in the discussion. Was there an actual motion on the table or we were just discussing the cleaning?
I hadn't made a motion yet because I needed the numbers to make the motion.
Councilman Schuster.
I just have a question, Mayor Church. Can you speak to your 6,000 then versus the 17,000?
Yes, I certainly can. My requested 6,000 was to have us as city employees clean our own building for an hour a day and then asking public works employees or an outside service to, I believe it was an outside service, wasn't it? Do you remember? To take care of the restrooms twice a week and that us as city employees would take care of cleaning our own house and vacuuming an hour a day.
Are you, are you still comfortable with that?
I am, but now that we've had the new cleaning service, I can't tell you if other employees are okay with that. It's a difficult thing, the cleaning, to hire it out because of the cost, but then to do it in-house. In, in 2023, we hired a position in public works that was to do just that and only that. That was part of the reason for hiring that additional person. And now that that has been removed, we have an additional employee hired on that doesn't do that job anymore. So we're having to find another way to facilitate the cleaning needs of our city. Please, Councilman Claus.
Thank you, Mayor. So the question is regarding the cleaning aspect of things and since Chief Smith is here, I'm wondering if it, if there is a requirement that whoever does the cleaning have a security background check, for example, to be able to go into the police department areas to do the cleaning?
From the admin, no.
I'm sorry, for admin. My mistake. Sorry, Chief.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other further discussion on this? Please, Councilman Brandt?
I just want to know from, from the staff of City Hall if you think we need to add a little bit in here for cleaning.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I, I can hardly hear anything.
Oh, I just want to know from the staff that works in City Hall if we should add some to the mayor's $6,000 request for, for professional services to bring in a cleaner or not, or is 6,000 adequate, do you believe, to have a cleaner come in? I, I don't think you should be.
Just the bathrooms? Because that's, that was kind of the deal breaker, as I recall, those public bathrooms.
This is a public building.
Right.
I don't think our staff should be cleaning the toilets. So, so what I'm asking is, is the $6,000 that the mayor is requesting, since it says that, that's a number that we're debating right now, is that adequate, in your opinion, for the cleaning? And what, I don't know what else is in professional services.
Professional services right now is
Golden Heart Waste.
Golden Heart Waste, which is the dumpster that we share with the police department. And Shred, Shred Wave, shredding service. And any other things that pop up? We did have the carpets cleaned this spring, maybe February. We had a deep clean from the remodel, so those, those were like isolated one-time things. I, I do, did talk with the mayor about continuing to have the carpets professionally cleaned at least once a year.
So.
That was also budgeted in there. I, I don't, I think probably somewhere between the eight and the 14. I think that if, if I was to make the amendment, I would do something in between that.
Thank you, Madam CFO. Councilman Brandt?
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at 2023 was $3,000 about, and 2024, $3,300 that we use professional services. So now that we know what, what is covered under that, those are things that we can't do without, obviously. So I don't think $6,000 is adequate to, to do those services and have a cleaner come in also. So I'm going to propose, well, this is, figure it'll be $900 a week times 52, so. Or $900 a month, I'm sorry, times 12. 11. So.
Councilman Brandt, are you going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm trying to make a motion.
Oh.
Just hold on a second here. I think the $17,000 is actually about, about right if we, if we do have professional cleaners come in to do it twice a week. Plus, no, you're right, it'd be about 14,000. So I move that we, we change the, the professional services under the admin budget from the mayor's proposed 6,000 to $14,000.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion? Public testimony. Would anyone like to speak to this? Staff, please speak up if, if you feel the need or the desire, I should say, not the need.
I'm sorry, I'm actually really sick tonight, so I'm trying to stay away from everybody. I just, point of clarification, I have the ordinance in front of me and reverting to the workshop line by line isn't in the ordinance, so I'm curious, is my mind not clear because I'm sick? What are we amending? It doesn't appear you're amending the actual ordinance.
So if I may, there, the attempt is to amend budgets line by line, which will then affect the amendment by ordinance, which is something that we should have done during the workshop and asked these questions.
I completely understand that, but the last roll.
This is where we're here.
She was specific to that it was to the ordinance, amending the ordinance. That worksheet is not in the ordinance, so I'm confused as to what you're amending. It should be, if you're amending the admin budget, you should be amending the admin budget one time. So I appreciate the workshop side of this, but I don't think you need motions and, and roll calls. Somebody in the end needs to make a motion to amend the actual ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you, I was going to ask you to do that. Thank you, sir.
I would just say.
Councilman Brandt, through the chair, yes, sir.
I would just say to that, we have to go line by line and then add everything up and then change the, the entire line. I don't know, I don't know how else to do this.
Chief.
About it.
Chief Heineken's correct, and I will refer to it as to the 2026 proposed budget instead of ordinance 2025-13.
Okay, thank you. Nope. I appreciate that, Chief. Thank you for that.
I appreciate that because I've never been through this before, so I don't know how it's done, so, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Tricia, you'll be able to make these amendments prior to the Monday meeting?
Yeah, I can adjust the ordinance page so that it's correct, whatever passes tonight.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the increase of professional services in the admin budget from 7,000 to 14,000.
6,000.
Point of clarification, 6,000 to the proposed 14,000.
From 6,000 to 14,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr., oh, Ms. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
Yes.
That passed with seven yeses.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Okay. Councilman Brandt?
I move we change line item publications and subscriptions from the mayor's proposed $6,000 to $3,325.
Good.
So, Mr. Brandt, could you repeat that change to amount? What's the new amount?
$3,325.
Thank you.
Discussion.
So there's two.
Councilman Brandt, through the chair, yes, sir. Go ahead.
There's two items that I'd like to remove from that. One is the $2,400 a month for the ChatGPT and $275 a month for, or a year for the newspaper.
So, Councilman Brandt, you can't predicate spending per category like you're desiring to spend? If you want to give a reason as to why that's why you're changing that line item, you certainly can, but you, as a councilperson, do not have the effect to say what can get spent through that category and not get spent through that category?
My intention is to defund the $2,400 for the ChatGPT and the $275 for the, the newspaper subscription. So the clerk has a newspaper subscription and she needs that to verify that anything that she publishes is done correctly. I don't see a reason why the mayor needs the taxpayers to pay for a newspaper subscription for him. The $2,400 for the ChatGPT, we had a citizen do a public records request and it came back from October last.
A point of clarification, I don't know if you can speak to a public records request that you didn't actually submit. Madam Clerk?
It's public record and I've seen it.
Unfortunately, not unfortunately, but it was addressed in a public meeting, so it was discussed in a public meeting whereby it isn't, it has been openly shared and.
Understood, thank you. Councilman, please continue.
So from.
Sorry for the interruption.
From October of last year until November of this year, the public records request showed that the mayor used the ChatGPT 19 times in 13 months at a cost of $200 a month. There is no justification for that.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilman Brandt. Further discussion, please. Councilman Schuster?
I'm gonna say this without the word proposed, but the number that I'm thinking of is $3,685, and that is reduced to a cheaper ChatGPT or AI software at 20 or 30, $30 a month is what I figured.
Who knew this was going to be such a hot-button topic? Please, Councilman Brandt, thank you.
And, and again, his, his public records request showed he used it 19 times in 13 months. I, I don't think that justifies even $25 or $30 a month.
Councilman Schuster?
I had a question for you.
Sure.
Mayor, I, I think when that was brought up at the last meeting, you said that you didn't have it for 13 months, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir. I don't recall exactly when it was purchased, but I certainly did not have it for the whole year.
I.
Councilman Brandt?
I would say I saw the public records request, it was from October, but, what Mr. Turtt stated was that the taxpayers were not paying for it until April. So from April until November, he used it 11 times.
Actually, Councilman Brandt, if I may speak to that, that was 11 chats, not 11 times, but I just wanted point of clarification. Any further discussion on my usage of ChatGPT and my subscription to the Daily News Miner, which I wholeheartedly support? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
On the amendment to the 2026 proposed budget from publications, from publica- decreasing publication and subscriptions from 6,000 to 3,325. Mr. Skips?
No.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mayor Church?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote?
That amendment passed four to three.
Okay, thank you. With that, we've been here an hour and a half and a few minutes. I'd like to move to suspend the rules for three minutes for a bathroom break.
Second.
Unanimous consent. Okay with everyone? Three-minute bathroom break and then we'll get right back into it. Thank you.
Skip second to the. We are back on the record, Mayor.
All right, if we can all grab our seats, please. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we are still in the administration budget. Any further discussion?
I, I do. What is.
Councilman Schuster?
Sorry.
Nah, it's fine.
I'll get it by the.
I know, I know. We'll, we'll work through it here.
What is, what is the process for bringing something back that we just voted on?
You can reconsider that in the same meeting if you so desire, I believe. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Looking it up, I thought you could.
Believe it's in our city code that you can reconsider up until the following meeting to reconsider an item that has been voted on.
Reconsideration, except as hereafter provided, no motion, resolution, or ordinance shall be reconsidered on the day upon which the final vote was taken. A member who voted on the prevailing side may, on the day upon which the final vote was taken, give and have entered in journal a notice of intention to move, move a reconsideration at the next council meeting. a notice of intention to move, uh, move a reconsideration at the next council meeting. On the day immediately following the vote on a motion, resolution, or ordinance, give the clerk of the council a written notice of reconsideration. When such notice is given, any member may, at the next council meeting, move a reconsideration of the question. The affirmative votes of four members of the council may order a reconsideration taken up at the same meeting that notice of reconsideration is given. The motion for reconsideration opens for debate. The question to be reconsidered shall have precedence over every other motion except for the motion to adjourn. When a motion is reconsidered, the vote is canceled as though it had never been taken. When a majority of votes to reconsider, the question immediately re- uh, excuse me, the, the question immediately recurs upon the question reconsidered. There, there shall be one reconsideration, even though the action of the council after reconsideration is opposite of the action of the council before reconsideration.
Does that help answer your question, Mr. Schuster?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's very clear.
So you, you could do it this evening if you wanted to, but you would have to have a vote of four, or you could submit that to the clerk and we could reconsider that at our next meeting without having to take a vote of four.
Can I give a reason prior to making that motion?
And were you on the prevailing side of the motion?
I was not.
Okay. You can, I feel like we're in uncharted territories. Feel free to talk, but since you weren't on the prevailing side, it would have to be in writing and at the next meeting.
If I can give reason now?
Yeah, sure, feel free to talk.
I think we just have to make note, I heard chatter that there might be a not enough money for some of the admin subscriptions. And so I would just like some clarity before the next meeting on that.
Councilman Schuster, sure. I'm sorry, Councilman Brand.
I did email the CFO about that, and she said the thirty-three, twenty-five is plenty. It would cover all of it.
CFO.
Yeah, I was ballparking that, but Michelle's got actual numbers here, and she's got thirty-four, eighty. So we're not talking about a lot.
And that is as, as it was.
As things are.
If anything adjusts.
Adobe.
For next year or raises.
Add two Adobe's in that matrix program, and it's $3,000 a year. That's that PFD.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
I just want to clarify that I did email you and ask you if the thirty-three, twenty-five was enough, and you said yes, right?
I said, yes, I think that, yes.
So now you're saying we need thirty-five hundred?
Basically, however, during the year, I could always move money within category.
Or I can just adjust that right now. Okay.
Suggest it.
So thirty-five hundred is what you would like? Okay, so I, I moved to reconsider. How, how do I do that?
Actually, yeah, you would have to ask for reconsideration, and then it would have to be voted on by, I believe, four members of the council, and then we would recall that vote after having discussion.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Brand.
Do I make a motion or just ask for reconsideration?
It would be a, a motion to reconsider.
A motion, a motion to reconsider.
And, and I heard it's, uh, Ms. Rolf seconded?
Yes.
And then your motion is to?
To change the publications and subscriptions from $6,000 to 3,500.
So the motion, it was the motion to reconsider the motion from six, six thousand to thirty-three, twenty-five. So your re- your motion, your reconsidered motion seconded by Ms. Rolf would be to make the admin subscription budget thirty-five hundred. Do I understand that correct?
Correct.
Uh, point, point of order.
Actually, yeah.
I don't think you can do it that way. I think the motion for reconsideration is just to reconsider the vote we took. If it's approved by four members, it solidifies the vote, and then we put a new amendment to change the six thousand.
Can't do it all in one.
I, I moved to reconsider the vote, change.
Let me take the motion to reconsider first, uh, and thank you for that point of clarification. Uh, on the motion to reconsider, uh, Mr. Claus?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Now we're going from six thousand to three thousand, right?
Yeah, three thousand, five hundred.
Actually, it's just a motion to reconsider, which means we withdraw the previous motion that was made and approved by council, and then it opens back up for a new motion.
Correct.
So you're voting to open it back up to discussion. Councilman Williams.
All right, let's go for that then. Yes.
And Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Ma- uh, Mayor Church?
Yes.
Okay, that was five to one.
Removing that vote. Thank you.
I'm sorry, six to one. Wow.
Should I say, does anyone like to change, would anyone like to change their vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to change it to yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Seven, so seven to zero that passed.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Brand, now, now.
Mr. Brand.
I moved to change publications and subscriptions from the $6,000 proposed to $3,500.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing then, I, I would like to speak up. I think this is, uh, we are burning the midnight oil here. And for what purpose? It, it seems real advantageous that we're almost two hours into this and we're still on the administration budget. That's all I have to say. Anybody else? Please call the roll.
Okay, on the motion to, uh, change the admin subscription and publication from six thousand to three thousand, five hundred, Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Skips? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote?
That passed with a five to two.
All right. Thank you for that. So we are still on the administration budget. Any further discussion on this budget? Councilman Brand.
I would like, um, our CFO to comment on the transfer out to pub- to capital projects. Last year was two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, and this year it's fifty thousand dollars. Can you speak to that, please?
When we were putting the budget together last year, our revenues were higher than our expenses, and so I talked to the mayor, at the Mayor Church, and, uh, it was, we could either lower our revenues or we could increase our expenditures. Uh, Mayor Church didn't want to increase our expenditures, agreed. And so that was a way to take the money that was expected to be more, uh, to move over to the capital projects fund. And that fund is, um, is twofold. It is, uh, funded by the fleet fund ordinance. It's a percentage of the actual money received by property tax and some additional funds, uh, as you can see in the fleet funds for the fire and the police. So we had added that additional there. I, I think I did talk to you a little bit about maybe that would have been a better place for a different fiscal note. But that's why that number is so high. This number here that we've got today for 2026 is the percentage of what is expected, the percentage that's supposed to be moved over there by ordinance from the, the property tax received.
And if I may speak to that a little bit, I, I do recall that, and we had a, a lengthy discussion about deferred building maintenance. As you look at the exterior of this building, it is in need of a lot of love. Um, we have the lap siding that's out there, the paint is falling off, and it certainly needs some capital improvement, and if we don't take care of what we have at the city, um, pretty soon it will be in ruins. So maintaining our structures is super important, and that is really hard to do with very little funds. Councilman Brand.
So was that, that money actually moved into the capital reserve fund then?
No, we normally move that money after we get all of our property tax in, which was usually is in January.
So the other use for that excess revenue could have been used to reduce, um, sales tax, property tax, cost of living for the taxpayers, correct?
It could have lowered res- revenues.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Brand.
So according to our code, we're supposed to have a, um, what's it called, a three-year capital improvement program as part of this budget? So we know what that money is gonna be spent on. Have, have you developed that yet?
I have developed, um, thoughts about that, but I have not put that pen to paper yet, like I spoke to just a few minutes ago. The structures that we have.
So according to our code, that has to be part of our annual budget, so we know what that money will be spent on. So if we can get that by the next meeting before the budget is passed, I'd appreciate that.
I, I'm sure you would appreciate that, and that's not gonna happen, but thank you for that, Councilman Brand.
Thank you.
You, Ben. Any other further discussion about this? Where would you like to go next, Councilman Brand?
Our meeting. You said department by department, so.
All right. Well, let's just turn the page, shall we?
Is the next page the clerk budget? Is it?
It's the clerk HR, yep.
What page number is that?
That's forty-one. Councilman Brand.
So going down the legal fees under the clerk HR, there is forty-five thousand dollars for clerk legal fees, and I would like to, I moved to lower that to last year's, uh, budget amount of four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Discussion on this item. Madam Clerk, since this is your budget, feel free to speak to it if you so desire.
Um, I, I, uh, I mean, if the council wants to, um, change the budget, they certainly have that capability. I don't know if we'll find any attorney that, uh, is as cheap as our former attorney, but if we have to just do budget amendments to, um, going through the year, uh, I will be here for it.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Oh, please, Councilman Claus.
Thank you, uh, through the mayor, uh, Madam Clerk, as far as, uh, what you believe, the absolute necessary things per legal fees for like postings, you know, legal notices, that sort of stuff. What is, what would be absolutely necessary and why?
Thus far, for like postings, I have the, um, election budget for election postings. I have a thousand dollars in advertising budget. I haven't ran across things that I would, that like legal, um, notices that I've, I, I haven't crossed that bridge here, so, um, I have it covered in other categories. I can't, I just, I, I can't know what I don't know, so I don't know what a different attorney, will charge per hour, how that will look for, uh, HR and clerk. Sorry, I don't have a better answer for that.
Follow-up, yeah, Councilman Claus, please.
Through the mayor. So with the figure that, that it's there for the forty-five thousand dollars, is that basically anticipating, legal fees regarding complications?
Um, I, all contracts have to go to the attorney. I've sent all, so, because sometimes, like I just read code, it's kind of, it's murky. I like to send, um, future code to the attorney for review. But that is also the clerk and HR budget, so if there are legal things that are in the HR wheelhouse that I'm, I'm very clueless, um, about, but, uh, yeah, it, it covers all, it covers all the contracts that go, and so thus far, um, I guess I'm budgeting based on the attorney that we have now, uh, so that's what my budget number for next year is related to.
Thank you.
Please. Madam CFO.
I, I, I just want to say I've been through this process for over ten years, and, uh, this, the clerk's budget is a very tight budget. Um, I, I think it's actually too tight. So if you're gonna make some amendments to lower it, I think we'll be back here, maybe looking at a fiscal note. This, this is the tightest budget in the, in the city right now.
Yeah, I remember going through that, and, uh, the concern that we had and the discussions that we had as a staff about, about that. Councilman Brand.
I will say going from four thousand dollars to forty-five thousand dollars, based on the experience we have with this particular lawyer, is not good use of the taxpayers' money. In the past, in 2024, we used, the clerk used thirty-six hundred dollars. We can't go up a factor of twelve, just because we have a bad attorney. Four thousand dollars is, uh, I, I going, going back over the audits for the last eight years, we've never spent that much, much more than four thousand, right around four thousand. That's what was budgeted for this year. It would have been adequate if we hadn't got this new attorney. I think we need to move on from this new attorney next year, and.
Councilman Brand, I'm just, point of order. You certainly can speak to your desire to change the budget, but to speak to the.
Just call the roll.
Excuse me, please, I'm speaking. To speak to your concern for our attorney, I, I don't think that I could stand anymore, um, so I'd appreciate it if you'd refrain from that and make the amendments as stated, okay? Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
On the amendment to change the clerk's legal, uh, budget from forty-five thousand to four thousand, Mr. Skips?
I'm sorry, point of order, it's, it's forty. It would be forty on the mayor's.
Thank.
I'm sorry for interrupting. I just want to make sure for the record.
I'll recall it for the, um, anybody listening. For the motion to reduce the clerk's legal fund from forty thousand to four thousand, Mr. Skips?
No.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Claus? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote?
That amendment, amendment passed four to three.
Councilman Brand.
Let's have a question here. The, um, the mayor's budget calls for nothing for legal fees for council, so I do not have to make a motion to, to remove that fifteen thousand. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We, we've never had that before, and I, I don't think that's necessary, so.
That's one thing that you and I can agree on this evening. Anything else when it comes to the clerk HR budget? Councilman Brand.
I, I just have a, a question of, um, the clerk. I'd emailed you and did not get a reply to this. The, um, wage calculator that you gave us, um, stated the, the wages would be for, for twenty-two, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents, but you have one hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred in the budget.
I possibly missed your email. Um, Ms. Rolf had asked for base wage, and so I sent our base wage calculator out. I didn't, I don't, I'm not sure about your question.
The, the calculator?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We are budgeting in case Maggie and I do receive professional development bumps. That's what I budgeted for. But when Ms. Ralph asked for the base ways, that's what I provided for. So.
Okay, yeah, that, that was a question I had in email. So you're saying that the one hundred and seventy thousand dollars that you used in the wage calculator is based on
Is our base wage, yeah.
Professional development.
Correct.
Okay. And you anticipate it to be eleven thousand dollars for, or twelve thousand dollars?
I can't know if Maggie or myself will actually receive our professional development bumps, but that's what we've budgeted for.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to move this meeting along. Anything else?
Want me to go to the next category?
Yeah, please.
Okay, that looks like the police department budget.
Page forty-seven.
Jed, are you able, do you have your paperwork? Can you see this?
I have both, yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, anything on the police budget? Councilman Brandt?
So I'm confused about the fleet fund, and we were going to ask the CFO in the last meeting, but she wasn't here. So where is it here? There was, oh, here it is. So transfer out of sixty thousand dollars. I assume that that's for the fleet fund. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the, it's the portion based on the calculation for the tax.
Oh, that, okay. So going back to the reserve fund here. So these fleet reserves, there's one hundred and sixty thousand in there.
Who wouldn't mind referencing what page you're on there, Mr. Brandt, so that we can follow along?
Page eighty-seven is a fleet, police fleet reserves. And it says twenty-two six proposed one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So I'm just wondering where the other hundred thousand dollars coming from, because I don't see that in the police budget.
What is your question again, sir?
I'm asking, we have a transfer out of sixty thousand dollars, and I assume that that goes to the, the fleet fund that's on page eighty-seven, but there's a total of one hundred and sixty thousand in the fleet fund on page eighty-seven. So there's a sixty thousand plus eighty thousand and another twenty thousand. I'm just wondering where that other hundred thousand dollars is in our budget. I can't find it.
It's not in our budget.
Okay.
I mentioned last time I'm bringing an ordinance to transfer some funds from twenty-two-five because we didn't have an officer for much of the year into the fleet fund for twenty-two-six, thereby enabling me to purchase cars without increasing the twenty-two-six budget and also ideally leaving a small positive balance in that account moving forward.
Okay, so we don't have that ordinance yet that you're bringing that forward?
Correct.
Okay, I see. I would like to speak on the police cars. I asked you for a, for a inventory of the, the police vehicles.
Is this a budget item?
Yes.
They're not on the budget.
That's sixty thousand dollars?
It's not.
Oh, that, that's a mandated. Okay, I see. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the police budget?
Second.
Councilman Brandt?
So I have a question about the cleaning also. So currently you have overtime of fourteen thousand dollars in here for cleaning and from speaking to in the past, your intent was to have two of your employees work overtime to do the cleaning. Is that correct? Is that still your intent?
Yes.
Okay. Find the wage calculator for you. I'm sorry. From the wage calculator you gave us, the two employees in question, one of them makes regular time fifty-eight eighty-six an hour, and the other one makes fifty dollars and twenty-one cents an hour. That's regular time. So time and a half, I realized that that's their loaded wage, so not all of that is going to be time and a half. And I didn't have time to get the actual, I, I asked several times, but I was never given the, the actual numbers. So it's going to be roughly eighty dollars an hour for the cleaner. Is that correct?
For overtime? Fifty is the overtime.
No, that's the loaded wage. If you take one employee at thirty-seven eighteen an hour, their loaded wage comes to fifty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents an hour. That's what we pay them. That's what it costs the city of North Pole to pay them per hour.
Paying someone overtime does not affect every category.
That's why I said, I, I just
Councilman Brandt, if you could let him respond to your question before you interrupt him again, I appreciate that. Little decorum in this. Thank you.
So when I did the calculation, it was with the overtime rate plus the impact to PERS. There's negligible to no impact on any other, any other benefit category that goes into the loaded wage as you're describing it. So the real, the real cost we're looking at is what does it cost to pay them the overtime? And then how does that increase of the overtime over the entire year affect their PERS contribution?
Correct. What I'm saying is fifty-eight dollars an hour, eighty-six cents an hour is their regular, regular time wage. Their loaded regular time wage. So my, my question was, what is their overtime rate? And I calculated about almost seventy-something dollars an hour.
Again, their, their regular hourly wage is in the low thirties. But you don't, you don't take the loaded wage and calculations you're doing are not figuring it out correctly. You take time and a half, how many hours of that time and a half, and then across the entire year, how is that going to impact their, their PERS contribution?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so fifty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents is what the loaded wage is per hour regular time. If we just take, add the nineteen dollars an hour, which was just the hourly rate on top of that, that, that's no benefits on top of that whatsoever. That's seventy-some-odd dollars an hour for, for one employee.
So of the two employees, one makes approximately five dollars more an hour. So I based all of my figures off of the higher employee with the understanding that they were going to share that responsibility. So if I base it off of the higher employee and a lower-paid employee does the same work, I'm not going to be over. I'm going to actually come in under. So that employee's wage is going to be thirty-seven eighteen straight time. Add it by two, plus their straight time again. That's fifty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents that we're paying them for overtime. Then I multiply that times a set number of hours that I'm establishing for the entire year. They don't get to go over that. And I figure out what that total amount is, and then how does that total amount affect their PERS? So if you want to discuss a loaded wage, it is their overtime rate plus that impact to PERS. That's the loaded wage. We don't have any of those other categories in the wage calculator included in a loaded wage.
Councilman Brandt, do you have a motion?
I, I do, but I'm going to sit down with you and, and show you my numbers and tell you where, where I came up with that and bring it up in the next meeting. We'll talk about it in the next meeting.
Hey, any other adjustments to the police department budget? Councilman Brandt?
So we, we briefly talked about the, oh, well, while we're at it, let's go to the, the legal fees. The mayor has ten thousand dollars. You've requested six thousand. Last year it was thirty-five hundred. So I'm going to move to make a motion to reduce the, the mayor's requested ten thousand dollars for legal fees to last year's budgeted three thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Discussion. Councilman Claus?
Thank you. Through the Chair, Chief Smith, for the legal fees. Would you give us an idea of what the legal fees are related to, please?
It's, it's a lot of different things like any other department. Obviously, we're one of the higher liability departments, so there's always the potential of more contact with the attorney that's needed, but that's entirely on a case-by-case basis. Some years we need much more than other years. So it's, it's many different things.
Thank you.
Councilman Brandt?
Let's see, last year we spent two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents on lawyers. The previous year was thirty-six hundred.
Councilman Brandt, we can see the chart in front of us. Thank you for regurgitating that information that has been discussed many times before. Do you have any further discussion as to the amendment, sir? Seeing none, please call the roll.
On the motion to decrease the police department legal fund from ten thousand to three thousand five hundred, Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. Claus?
No.
Mayor Church?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
And that motion failed three to four.
Hey, any further discussion on the police department budget? Councilman Brandt?
Um, can you remind us why the recruitment went up to twelve thousand this year?
Chief Smith?
Hang on, let me find it.
Travel training and memberships. It's four, five items up from the bottom.
Why it went up from ten to twelve?
Correct, yeah. In twenty-two-four is, we spent sixteen twenty. Last year, the budget last year was ten thousand. We've spent twenty-nine seventy-five this year. Your request next year is twelve thousand. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we always try to keep enough in there that we can pay for an academy. An academy varies depending on which academy they get into. The one here locally is about eight grand. The one in Sitka is twelve. So that's, that's why. We just never know.
Okay, I would just assume that would go in training, not recruitment. So that's, that's why I was confused.
You can assume and desire that, sir. Do you have anything else? Okay, moving on to the next budget. Be the fire department budget. Page fifty-three.
Like this really
Look at that. Okay, Councilman Brandt?
Um, I'm going to make a motion to reduce the fire department legal from five thousand to last year's appropriated two thousand.
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Brandt?
So in the, in the past, we've never used more than a thousand dollars. So going from two thousand dollars last year up to five thousand dollars this year, again, just because based on our current lawyer seems extreme to me. Two thousand dollars is twice what we've used in the past. I think that's adequate.
Please, Councilman Claus?
Through the Chair, to Chief Heineken, would you please explain why that increase might be warranted, please?
The, the increase was due to what we've been seeing in billing this current year. Well, yeah, I mean, you're looking at me like you want more, but when I did this budget, I knew what our current attorney has been billing us for. I knew that the, what was in the past was not going to be sufficient, so I increased it.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, yeah, I think all of us did that same.
Councilman Skips?
I just have a quick comment. I believe the special session was called so Madam CFO could answer questions since she was gone. Now, it just seems like we're rehashing the whole budget that a lot of these questions could have been asked last week for, from individual other departments rather than Madam CFO.
I'll allow you to respond to that, Councilman Brandt, since you're
Two things. This is the way your mayor chose to run this meeting. That wasn't my choice, but the meeting was called to address changes we wanted to make in the budget. How else are we going to make individual changes to the budget? I, I don't know how else to do it.
Please, Councilman Skips?
I understand exactly what you're saying, but a lot of the questions you had in the previous meeting, Madam CFO wasn't here to answer, and that's when you decided, when it was decided that, hey, we need to have another meeting Monday since Madam CFO is not here, because if we wait till the next scheduled council meeting, there's not that enough time around or turnaround to where she will have the proper quest or answers of the questions asked. That was my main understanding of why we're here tonight, is so Madam CFO can answer the questions that you had from the previous meeting that she was not able to attend.
That was our intent when we called this meeting, no.
It, all right. Thank you, Councilman Brandt. Madam Clerk? We have a motion on the floor, correct? So been moved and seconded? Any further discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
On the motion to decrease the fire department's legal budget from five thousand to two thousand dollars, Mr. Skips?
No.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
That motion passed five to two.
So, Mr. Mayor, real quick, if you'd mind seeing that we're on the fire department. I'm, I'm still looking for some clarification. The only thing on your agenda is an ordinance twenty-two-five dash thirteen, and I'm confused what you're voting on. I understand it's the worksheet from the work session, but I'm confused as to your agenda. The only action items you have tonight is this simple document. So I'm, I'm once again confused as to what you're voting on.
I
Understand the reception. I understand you can make those adjustments, but those adjustments would be made on, on the ordinance in the end, not line by line. So I'm just point of order. I'm confused.
No, I
I've never seen this before.
I wholeheartedly agree with you. Please, Councilman Schuster.
I, I just, I, I don't disagree, but I don't see any other way to do it. And then we, after these items are voted on, then that is changed. And so I just, I don't disagree, but I just don't see any other way to do it.
I, I'm just pointing out, the only thing on your agenda for, for action items is this ordinance, and you're voting on stuff on a worksheet.
I can't agree with you any more than you've already succinctly put it, sir. I didn't call this meeting. I'm just here to run the meeting and to keep everyone in order.
And absolutely, the changes, absolutely, it is your right to change this ordinance and change the budget out. I'm not disqualifying that. I'm just confused as to the process.
Any other discussion on the fire department budget? Councilman Brandt?
A real quick question. Do we pay, only pay the per-call fee for dispatches that are in the city limits, or do we also have to pay that for mutual aid calls?
It, it's every tone out, whether it's mutual aid, whether it's our own call. Yeah, every single tone out, we're, we're charged for.
Okay.
That might change in the future. We've brought that up in dispatch meetings about We've brought that up in dispatch meetings about, you know, mutual aid situations where, you know, it's not evenly distributed sometimes. But I couldn't guarantee that that change will be made.
Okay.
Anything else on the Fire Department budget? See none. Anything else in the budget we'd like to adjust?
Public Works.
Sounds great. Thank you, Councilman Brandt.
Public Works.
That's page 58. Councilman Brandt.
So as we discussed before, this, this budget includes the fifth Public Works employee that was going to be hired to work on the stormwater, stormwater fixes or whatever you want to call it. But talking with Tim and Cody, they agree that, that since we are not going to be doing that this year, that removing that fifth person would, would be fine. So I, I would like to move that we. How, how would the CFO like to do this? How would it be easiest for you to remove that fifth person?
Councilman Brandt, you have to make a motion, sir.
Well, I could go line by line through the wages and benefits, or we could just, I could just reduce the wage, and you could adjust the rest of it before the next meeting. Would that be adequate? I, I've got all the numbers, but they're not. Okay, well, if we have to do it this way, I make a motion under weight, Public Works wages to reduce the $421,000 to $365,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please, Councilman Skips.
Is, would that be the correct number then, if you deduct one person?
Yes.
Thank you, Director Glidden. Councilman Brandt.
I, I will say I got these, all these numbers directly from Tim.
Yeah, I think.
Councilmen, I'm sorry, go ahead, CFO.
Sorry, I, I think if you're gonna adjust the, you're gonna adjust the whole category, is that right?
I have all the numbers if you want me to do it that way.
I think you could do that. If there's no ejection, you could do that all throughout that wage, salary benefits line, and then it could just be voted on right then.
Adjust the whole category.
Faster and clearer.
Correct. If you'd like to withdraw your earlier motion.
I will withdraw my motion. That's exactly how I tried to do it before, and you wouldn't let me, but I'll do it, do it now.
That was legal through many departments.
So under wages and benefits, wages would be reduced to 300.
Actually, just as a whole category, sir. Total dollar amount at the end is how you can adjust that entire scale.
Okay. I make a motion to reduce the wages and benefits total from $714,500 to $635,500.
Second.
Any discussion? Please.
Yeah.
Councilman Skips.
Those are the right numbers.
Director Tim has given him the numbers. I could certainly get the numbers from Tim. I can make the adjustments on this worksheet for the next time.
Yeah, I'd rather make sure all the numbers are correct on here prior to confirming this.
We already have a motion on the floor, so that can't happen.
Yeah.
Feel free to speak.
CFO. Again, this is a budget. It's, it's not set in stone. What, what we need to use, we will use. If we don't have enough, we have to come back with a fiscal note. That, that, that's our ability to change the budget. I mean, David, you've been here a long time. You've seen a lot of, we have had changes to the budget, like maybe two or three changes. This is the most changes I've seen in 10 years.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
On the motion to remove the extra person from Public Works and, and change the whole category, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Actually, if, if I made just a point of order, his motion was to reduce the category from $714,500 to $635,500, if I'm, if I'm correct. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Brandt. Madam Clerk, please.
Thank you. On that motion, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr., Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
That passed by seven. I just, can I have one?
Please.
So I did publish the agenda for the December 1st meeting. I just wanna, I'm gonna have to pull this ordinance from that agenda and repost it, and I'm hoping that's not gonna cause any issues. But now that the ordinance is gonna have a bunch of changes, just FYI, I'm gonna have to amend that agenda that went out, and I'll repost it online and reprint it for everybody. But I just wanted to put that out in the world, that, that, that will be happening.
Understood. Thank you for that, Madam Clerk.
And that passed with seven, by the way.
Appreciate that. Councilman Brandt.
Under professional services, I make a motion to reduce that from $50,000 to $10,000.
Second.
So under purchased services, under professional services.
Services.
Correct, okay.
So this was the $40,000 that we had for the stormwater grant that we are no longer going to be using. So the Director of City Services asked for that to be removed.
Discussion. Director Glidden, correct with those numbers? Okay. Call the roll, please.
On the motion to reduce professional services in the Public Works budget from $50,000 to $10,000, Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Okay. Passed with seven zero, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it did pass with seven zero.
All right, thank you. Councilman Brandt.
On the next page, page 59, second from the bottom, is Parks, Trails, Grounds Supplies. I make a motion to reduce that from $165,000 to $65,000.
Second.
That was 165 to 65,000?
From 165,000 to 65,000.
Thank you.
Discussion.
So that, there was.
Councilman Brandt.
$100,000 in there for the Highway Park Playground that we've removed at the last meeting. And I did ask the Director at the last meeting if $65,000 would cover what his plans for the other park improvements that he wanted to do, and he said yes.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the motion to reduce from the Public Works budget from Parks, Trails, Grounds and Supplies from $165,000 to $65,000, Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote?
And that passed seven to zero.
Okay, sounds great. Before we move on, anything else? Okay. Moving on to the Enterprise Fund. Let's start with the water. We are page 63. Any discussion on this or proposed changes? Councilman Brandt.
I do need to go back to Public Works, please, real quick. The, I propose we reduce the legal fees for Public Works from $10,500 down to $3,000.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion on this? Councilman Claus.
Thank you, Mayor, Director Glidden. Any particular comment?
So this number was just a guess based on what we've been billed with the new attorney. But I would point out that not only is the attorney new, but I'm also new. So I'll probably have more questions for an attorney than my predecessor did. And from what I've found in the legal documents, they're not great. So I don't know that we can look at how much time he spent with the lawyer as a good amount of time. So I, I don't feel like I need $10,500, but I probably would need more than $3,000, is my guess. I don't, I do a lot of invitations to bid and contracts.
Thank you for that, Director. Any further discussion? Please, Councilman Claus.
Just to follow up to Director Glidden through the Chair. The purposes of this particular budget, would a lucky number like 7,000 be more appropriate, do you think?
Uh, yeah, that would be a good guess.
Councilman Brandt.
I will say, last year, we budgeted 4,000. For 2024 budget, we budgeted 4,000, only spent 1,300. I understand you say you're new, the attorney's new. If we get a new attorney that, that is, is more qualified, I'm, I'm sure we're not going to spend near as much. So I, I feel confident with the $3,000.
Any further discussion on this? Please call the roll.
On the motion to reduce the Public Works legal fund from $10,500 to $3,000, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
No.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. Skips?
No.
Mayor Church?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
That motion failed four to three.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilman Claus.
Mayor, may I please make a motion to set that budget for the legal fees for Director Glidden's department to 7, $7,000?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any discussion on this? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the motion to reduce the Public Works legal fund from $10,500 to $7,000, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote?
That passed, I'm sorry, with six yes, one no.
Okay, thank you. Moving back to the Water Fund. Any adjustments that council members would like to make to this?
Schuster.
Okay, moving on to the Sewer Fund. Councilman Brandt.
So back to the water, the legal fees, I'd like to reduce from 6,000 to last year's budget of 5,000.
Second.
Who moved and seconded? Any discussion? 65, sir. Please, Madam CFO.
Okay, before we move to other funds, just, just to note that now we're not in budget. We're out of budget in our general fund. So how are we, I'm asking how, what's the intent of that? So do, do you have a category that you're gonna lower in revenues to make this thing balance?
My intent is eventually to lower either the sales tax or the property tax or eliminate the online sales tax.
Are we doing that tonight?
We need to get all the numbers, so it'll probably be the next meeting.
We're gonna have a budget that's out of balance for the next meeting. Just, just, I'm just saying.
I don't know how else to do it, the way the mayor is wanting to do this, so.
I have Michelle here, so she has a figure that we can either lower something. So we can give you that figure. We can make that general fund balance, and then we can go to these other funds.
Okay. I'm just doing what the mayor's telling me to, so.
May I ask one quick question, too? I'm sorry. It was reduce the water, the legal fund for water to what, Mr. Brandt?
From 6,000 to 5,000.
Thank you.
Please, Tim.
So reducing the water won't affect tax in any way, as far as I know how the.
Yeah, that's true, okay. I withdraw my men, or my motion.
Do I have concurrence of the second on this? Thank you.
And Councilman Brandt, your desire to change sales tax code, it's actually in ordinance. So we can, if that's your intent, we certainly can change the budget this evening. But then you would have to do an ordinance amending that. Okay? And if you'd like help, I certainly can help you put that together. Where would you like to go next, Mr. Brandt? Since you seem to be the one driving this, this evening.
I'm not driving this, I'm just making amendments.
The next category is Sewer Fund?
Okay, moving on. Brings us to the Assessment Fund. On page 70. And this was one of the questions that we had during our last meeting. Madam CFO, if you wouldn't mind speaking to some of this, if you would, please.
Are you asking how the Assessment Fund works? Little history, or?
They had questions about it during our last budget read-through.
Okay.
So I don't know if they had direct questions, and you would like to field those, I guess, before we go through this? Please.
I, I do.
Councilman Schuster.
I, sorry, I missed one on the Sewer Fund. If you'd rather address that first, or it doesn't matter to me. I just, whatever's clean, best for everybody.
Sure. We'll just go back and forth, no problem. Back to page 64, is that correct? Or 65?
64.
Okay.
I don't have the figures in front of me, so I would need to ask the question first. I don't agree with paying off the loan. Was it, I can't remember which loan it was. Tim, could you answer that?
Yep.
Okay.
It's the one that's $61,000, all the way up on the right.
Okay.
Or it's loan number 633021. Yeah. Sorry, Tim, I got it right in front of me.
Do you remember, off the top of your head, what the interest was per year on that?
It's like $1,000.
It's on page 64, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, okay, 66, I was looking.
Fine, yeah.
Me either.
Oh, there it is, okay.
And so I would probably need, would the, would the 25 numbers be the same for 26? I would assume so. If we were to change that, I guess. If we were to change that, I guess, Madam CFO.
It's a line above that I believe he's referring to.
Yes, I am.
And so payment.
Yeah, so if we just reduce that back to 3,000, would that cover it for 26?
Councilman Brandt.
If I remember right, you said we were almost done paying this one off, is that correct?
That was the water one.
Oh, okay.
That was just one extra payment.
Okay, but this one, how much longer do we have to pay on this one, off the top of your head?
I would say 20 years.
Okay.
If it's $61,000 and $3,000 a year.
Mr. Schuster, did you make an official motion?
I hadn't, but I, but I will.
Okay.
I move, we adjust line item 42129, 950, 61,000 to 3,000.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, for those that are watching online, would you mind scrolling to that? Yep, perfect, thank you. Please, Councilman Brandt.
Can you remind us our rationale of you wanted to pay this one off? Is this because it was the lowest number that we had, or was there another reason?
No, it was just because we have a few loans to get something paid off. No benefit aside from the $1,000 a year in.
Okay, any further discussion? Please, Councilman Schuster.
Yeah, I was just going to speak to the intent of my motion is that we're making higher interest rate with that money sitting in a AMLIP account than paying it off and paying the interest each for the year.
Okay, thank you for that. Please, Councilman Brandt.
Without the amortizations, because we really don't know that, but I don't know what the interest rate is and all that stuff, but.
It's right under that line item?
The rate?
I don't know about the rate, but if you were to just calculate based on principal alone.
I agree with you. If we do that, Tim, we would have to adjust the revenues up. Is that correct?
If we moved this down, no, we would, we would have to spend more money or transfer money out. Right, because we're taking away $58,000 of expense.
Expense, so we would have to adjust the income also, the revenue also, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this? Clerk Brannagh, please call the roll.
On the motion to amend line item 4212-99500 from 61,000 to 3,000, Mr. Skips? Was that a no?
No, correct, no.
Thank you. Mr. Williams? Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf?
No.
Mayor Church?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote?
That failed four to three.
Any other adjustments? Counsel. Please, Councilman Brandt.
Any adjustments in the sewer or the rest of the?
Anywhere you'd like to go, sir.
Okay, well, I do have a question on the assessment.
Let's, let's go there.
Or what page that is, hold on a second.
Page 70.
Okay, on the, can you go over this assessment fund with us real quick, Trish, and just explain it to us?
Okay, the assessments, we have, we had three districts of assessments. We're down to District Two and District Three, that's all we have left. This last year, we made our final payment, which was the Stillmire bond payment. So we have anticipated things that we build. And of course, that's revenue, and then we expected expenses. There was a difference of 54,000, $5,450 that we anticipate going back into the fund balance. If all, if everything that we've budgeted for is, turns out to be actual.
So can I ask how come in the past, if our legal fees are $75, this year $100, last year $25, the year before, why it went up to $5,000?
We have three properties that were foreclosed upon several years ago that the city owns. They are delinquent. I did talk to the mayor, this is not on here, talked to the mayor about possibly paying those off. Ultimately, something needs to be decided on if the city's going to retain those properties or if at some point can we sell the properties. And so that money would probably come out of this fund, thinking that we need to address that somewhere in 2026. I threw that in as a possibility.
Do you really anticipate $5,000 in legal fees for that?
I don't know what legal fees are going to be. I mean, I know what they were in the past, I know what we have, the bills that we have now. You're talking about going to a different attorney possibly, don't know what that is going to look like.
So we're not putting money into this fund this year from the general fund?
No, no, this is not the general fund. It's this assessment fund that, the project has basically been done. It's divided up by square foot of lots, and it's an annual fixed payment. And so this is in two neighborhoods right now. It's in Highway Park and it's in Stillmire. And we actually don't have a lot, I want to say, off the top of my head, maybe 25 to 30. Still out there to pay. Every year, people sell property, they get paid off. Eventually, we won't have an assessment fund unless we do an assessment.
I just remember in the audit that there was a lot of questions about this in the audit. So I'll just sit down with you later and go over this.
A lot of the questions in the audit was the properties that the city owns.
Right, so I'll just sit down with you later on this. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilman Brandt.
I think all of us had questions about this impound lot. That's on.
Page number 80.
We were going to ask the CFO questions about this at the last meeting, but she wasn't here. Can you explain to us? I don't understand, this is money that is sitting in a fund, waiting for an impound lot to be built, is that the gist of this?
Actually, we own the property, several, I can't tell you what year, but the, this impound lot purchased the property from the utility department. They had some property that they weren't going to use. I believe it's over by the dump. And it's been surveyed, so that's been paid for. They had budgeted money maybe to clear last year.
Yeah, that was really the last thing we looked at, is what is it going to call? The term they used was grub, like clean all the undergrowth off and then bring gravel in. Obviously, it's building based on our impound fees. At that time, we just simply didn't have enough in the fund to do that. So it's an eventual goal, because it'd be a huge boon to the city, but we can only do as much as we have money for.
Are we currently putting money into that fund from the general fund? No.
In the audit, it gets rolled up into the general fund, but it's a separate fund on, basically on our, in our books. So any money that's collected that's not used goes into this fund balance. And the theory behind it was is we would eventually be able to get up and going and having our own impound lot. And so the tow companies would tow to our lot. And we wouldn't have, the, whatever gets determined at that time would be, you know, so much per day. And so at that point, we would put something like that on our fee schedule, I would assume.
So is this currently being funded by the impound fees?
Yes.
So impound fees are going into this?
Yes.
Any further questions, Councilman Brandt? Any questions from anyone else? Where would we like to go next, counsel?
Are there any other amendments to the 2026?
Please, Chief.
I don't know if it's the right time to say this, but just for the record, I'm not dead set on paying overtime for cleaning. My initial plan was to have the outside company come in. That reduction became part of the negotiations of my overall initial proposed budget. If the council is amenable to it, I would prefer we go back to that. I did just get notification that a couple of the folks cleared our CGIS clearance from this current company. It's going to double the price, it's going to be about a little over $30,000 for the year, because we can't get by with just one day a week. And it's a much larger space. So just putting that out there, I was trying to cut the cost in half and use people we already have security cleared in-house to be as economical as I could. I would prefer the way it was originally set.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Brandt, did you have a question? You raised your hand there.
No, I'll sit down with you this week and talk about it.
Okay, counsel, any other amendments to the budget?
Have to go back to revenue.
Okay.
What page is revenue?
32.
Thank you.
Councilman Brandt.
Well, Trish said that we had to adjust this tonight, so if we have the numbers now, but I don't see how you would have all the numbers yet, so.
Well, today, earlier, Michelle and I put together a spreadsheet that has all the funds on it. And so any changes that were made tonight, Michelle's plugged them in. So we are $356,400 that we've cut on expenses, so we need to cut somewhere on revenue.
Councilman Brandt.
So does that include the, what we cut for the wages and benefits and admin? Because when we cut the wages, the wages, not the benefits.
Yeah, we cut the wages, but not the benefits. You mean for the replacement?
Right, we lowered from 370 to 350, but we did not lower the benefits, PERS, leave, overtime, wages, and health insurance.
But we adjusted the whole category?
We did not.
Okay.
We adjusted the whole category and public works not in, because I, we reduced the wages by 20,000, and that's going to affect the rest of the lines, and I don't have the calculator to do that, so.
The health insurance is based off per pay period.
The same, yeah.
We don't know how many pay periods are going to be here. A real quick one would be to take that times 22%, you could adjust PERS down to 22% of that.
Yeah, the difference isn't going to be a whole lot, but.
No, it's not going to be a whole lot.
I'm just saying, if you need an accurate number tonight, that's the only thing that we need to.
I think we could adjust it down here and based on what you think after our meeting, on Monday night's meeting, you could let it ride.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
Any further discussion, please? Councilman Schuster.
Can you just repeat that number one more time, 356,000?
356,400.
Councilman Brandt.
So in the past, we have had drastically underestimated our revenues for the year during the budget. And I think that this budget is the same. Well, real quick while I'm looking for that, so let's just go to, back to revenue here.
Page 32.
So sales tax. Sales tax on this year's budget is estimated $5,400,000, but the previous year, we took in $5,400,000. So this year presumably we will take in more, and then next year also more than that. I'm currently trying to figure out a way, to figure out if we are gaining excess sales tax revenue now that Three Bears and Ace Hardware is open, or if it's kind of awash with taking business away from Safeway and Sentry. And I'm going to sit down with the CFO this week and try to figure a way that we can determine that. But the number we have tonight, I think, is low on the actual revenue saving.
So earlier in the year, we did make a budget adjustment to remove sales tax from certain items throughout the city that we effectively estimated between $125,000 and $140,000 as a cost to the city by reducing that sales tax. So I hope that that comes into play with your numbers when you're calculating that, Councilman Brandt.
Right, yeah, like I said, I have to sit down with the CFO this week and figure that out.
Any other adjustments to our budget?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, please, Councilman Schuster.
I move that we lower property tax from revenue from 1.3 million to.
Not to wake anybody up out of their sleep.
From, lower from 1.3 million to 943,600.
Could you repeat that second number?
Second.
So moved in seconded. Oh, Councilwoman Rolf, please.
So I have a question, how do we get to the number of what to expect for our property tax? Like what our share will be from the borough?
To get an estimate from the borough.
Okay, so do we know what the value is of properties within the city of North Pole?
Right, and basically, they take off any exemptions that people might have that's out there. They have that separated, and if everybody pays, then that's, we went with the 1.9 or whatever it was, based off that letter we got from the borough.
I'd also like to remind counsel, I see your hand there, thank you. I'd also like to remind counsel that if we adjust the property tax, we will have to also adjust the mill rate, which will then affect all of the other funds that are automatically. that are automatically transferred out of that mill rate into our police, fire, building. And what else comes out of that, Madam CFO?
It's a police, fire, fleet funds, public work fleets funds, and then the capital improvement, capital project fund. So there's four. And we used to have an admin fleet fund, but that was taken away many years ago.
Okay. Councilman Brant, you had a question?
When do we get the exact numbers from the borough? Because our estimate this year is exactly the same as it was last year, and that doesn't seem right to me.
Uh, usually around June or July.
So this year's proposed is $1.3 million. Last year's was $1.3 million. I can't see that would be the exact two years in a row. My my assessment hasn't come down. I don't think anybody else's has. So do we have an exact figure from them?
I have it in my office. We could look, we could, I could go get it right now if you'd like. We could look at it when you're when you stop by.
Mayor Church?
Yes, Councilman Schuster?
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Santos, are concurrents of the second?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other amendments?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please, Councilman Schuster?
I move we decrease sales tax from fifty-six, no, five million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred to five million, two hundred and sixty-seven, seven hundred dollars.
Repeat that number again, if you will, please.
Five million, five million, two hundred and sixty-seven, seven hundred.
Second.
Moved in seconded, discussion on that? Councilman Brant?
Go ahead.
No, you first, you proposed it.
Okay, Councilman Brant, please, go ahead.
I withdraw.
I I would just think it's the most pertinent area to move from. I think there was, you know, I debated and thought a lot about online sales tax and trying to do something with that revenue. I just, I think it hurts. I thought a lot about creating business in the city. And if I were to give an example, if I were to wanted to start an auto parts store inside the city. And, you know, I'm going and I'm planning on opening this business. And I know that Amazon or other online businesses might be, you know, 5% cheaper than me already. And then if we were to get rid of or change internet sales tax, then that creates an additional 5%. And I think I just wouldn't want to do that to our local businesses or potential local businesses.
Councilman Brant?
So I've been around and around and around on this too, where the best place to put the savings is regardless of what we do tonight, we are going to be lowering the the cost of living in the city of North Pole. So it's a win-win no matter where we put it. I would rather change the sales tax rate across the board for online and and sales in the city rather than leaving online sales higher than than city sales. If we do reduce the property tax, there's not that much difference in what goes into the fund. So we could adjust those. Like it's 0.16 mils and 0.25 mils, you know, it's not, it's not that much. So we could do the math on that before the next meeting, too. My thought on reducing the on reducing or eliminating the online sales tax is that that is a tax burden on solely the city residents and so Chief Smith and Chief Heineken both say that, you know, a very large number of their calls are outside of the city limits. So the sales tax that the people live outside of the city limits that come into the city to purchase things helps us pay for the services that we were providing to the residents of the borough that live outside of the city limits. The online sales tax solely hits only residents that live inside the city limits. So I would like to see that lowered. The property tax would benefit residents and businesses both if we were to reduce the property tax. So it's a win-win no matter where we go with it. We're lowering the the cost of living to the residents. But I'm not quite sure where the the best place to reduce that would be.
And I don't disagree with through the mayor. I don't disagree with that. I would like to see what that changes with the fleet fund before before I make a decision.
Councilman Brant?
So for reduce, you're saying reduce it all from line 31 to 3100 sales tax?
I do, and.
If I may, just point of order. Do we have a motion still on the floor to reduce sales tax? Can we speak to that as as long as we're done there with discussion on that before we move on? Please, go ahead, Councilman Brant.
That's what I'm trying to speak to.
Okay.
So if you reduce only the sales tax, and we have sales tax miscellaneous vendors also, and then we have sales tax online, alcohol tax, tobacco tax, you know, all of those are five and a half percent right now. What's that? Oh, the tobacco isn't, you're right, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, tobacco.
The alcohol, sales tax, sales tax miscellaneous vendors and sales tax online are all five and a half percent. So if we reduce only sales tax, that's going to be a little confusing. We can, we can add those numbers up and figure out what the actual sales tax number would be reduced to and spread it across those four four line items.
Correct, yeah, I agree.
Hey, any further discussion on that? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I just want to make sure I got my numbers right. It, the motion is to reduce sales tax from 5,650,465 to 5,267, to five million, thank you, 5,267,700. Okay. On that motion, Mr. Brant?
No.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Claus?
No.
Ms. Ralph?
No.
Mr. Skips?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
And Mayor Church?
Oh.
That motion, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Would anyone like to change their vote? It's tough when it's unanimous, isn't it?
Yeah, that motion failed by seven.
Okay, anything else, counsel? Councilman Brant?
If, do we have to do decide this tonight? Where where this reduction comes from? Because then you said it's it's not a balanced budget going to the next meeting. So we do have to decide tonight.
When we, when we have to bring it to you, we have to have a balanced budget. So the motions that you made tonight made this budget unbalanced.
Okay.
I will say that when we're getting, when we're doing, in our process, when we're doing that, we go back and forth. We do somewhat plug it into the sales tax figure because like, like you said, we don't know. We, some months are high, some months are low. We've been lucky enough to hit that mark fairly, very fairly regularly. But that's kind of our our way to plug it in our process.
Councilman Brant?
Is there a way you can do quick math and figure out what a lowered percentage? You know, 5% or 4.1 something percent, what that, well, it would be over 5% would it? Because it's not, it's not 500,000 quite yet. So it wouldn't even be a half a percent for.
Talking about two different things.
Yeah. Well, what I'm talking about is it didn't make sense to lower just sales tax. We would have to lower the alcohol tax, sales tax, sales tax miscellaneous vendors and sales tax online.
So alcohol tax is different, and so is tobacco tax?
Well, sales, if we lower below 5% on the alcohol, on our sales tax, alcohol tax would be that because the borough retains, they have a 5% borough-wide sale sales tax on alcohol. Anything above that, we have to pay them since we get five and a half percent. We have to give them half a percent.
Oh, we get, we get the 6%.
Okay, well, we have, we.
We don't have to pay the borough back. That it's in, it's in our city that we've, we retain that money.
What's a half a percent then that goes to the borough?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, I'll show that to you later.
Okay.
Okay, so regardless, we can't just reduce sales tax and not reduce sales tax miscellaneous vendors.
We don't know what that is?
Right.
So I was in your seat, I would leave that alone. I would maybe make it, if you want to split it out, you could make it some proportion between online and and sales tax. They're both five and a half percent with a $16.50 cap.
And the number again that we need to make up is what, three, 365?
No, 356,400.
I'm dyslexic, so thank you. Councilman Brant?
We could also adjust up our projected revenues to meet the goal of reducing the tax rate to 5%, say, because then we would know how much we would need to.
I'm not following.
I'm not either.
Okay, right now, we have 356,400 in savings. If we wanted to reduce the sales tax by half a percent, bringing down to 5%, that would mean we would have to come up with how much money? It'd be half a million dollars about, a little bit more. So our projected revenues, I believe, are low. So we could adjust our projected revenues up to meet the whatever the reduced sales tax rate would be. Or alternatively, we could take it all out of our online sales tax and just make our online sales tax lower.
I don't, I'd have to check that. I don't know that we can make an online sales tax lower than a regular sales tax.
Okay. So we're stuck with trying to figure out if we're going to take it out of sales tax?
Just because we adjust the budget doesn't mean we have to adjust the sales tax rate in 2026. Like, I think we should, we should get some more data before you kind of go down that road, my opinion.
The intent of of doing all this work that I've done for the last couple of weeks is to reduce the cost of living to the taxpayers in North Pole. And if we save 356,000 out of this budget, I want to pass it on to the taxpayers. I don't want to put it in a slush fund and be spent on whatever later. That was, and I think everybody up here agrees that it's time to, you know, save the taxpayers some money. So I spent a lot of time going over the last eight years budgets and the, our projected revenues have been off by hundreds of thousands of dollars every single year. 2024, we took in 1.3 million dollars over our projected 9.2 million dollars. 2022, we took in 1.4 million dollars more. 2021, we took in 1.2 million dollars more. None of that money was returned back to the taxpayers. It's sitting in unreserved general fund that is, if we add everything up, close to 14 million dollars right now. The Government Financial Officers Association recommends a two-month unrestricted general fund reserves for cities. The borough, their target is 17%. The city of Fairbanks is 20%. We're sitting at 100 and 120%. So I believe it's time to quit stockpiling this money and return some of it back to the taxpayers.
I would like to speak up and speak a little bit to that. Councilman Brant, I don't know if you read the article in the newspaper about the city of Fairbanks and their difficulty, but they are looking at doing a lottery to help take care of and fund their city. I'm glad that I live in North Pole. I'm glad to pay sales tax. I'm happy to have the police force that we have. And the reason we have such a good business infrastructure inside the city of North Pole is because our services that we offer, whether it be for police, fire, public works, water, sewer. It's a wonderful place to live. And it's attractive to businesses because of that. They don't have to worry about people coming in the business and walking out with cartfuls of stuff, waiting 15 to 20 minutes for an officer to show up for nothing to be done. So while you're trying to cut and give back, I think the city of North Pole has done a fine job of giving back to our citizens. And while I don't disagree with you, the way in which you're going about it, I don't disagree with that. I disagree with that wholeheartedly. Councilman Brant?
I would say the reason Fairbanks is doing what they're doing is because of the tax cap. We do not have a tax cap. If we keep going down this road, we will have a tax cap, I guarantee it. I'm trying to prevent that. And I don't think returning excess revenue that that we don't need on our budget back to the taxpayers is unreasonable.
Okay, any further discussion on the budget this evening? Madam CFO, to get us to balance, what's the most concurrent and easiest way to make this happen for you?
Again, you could make an adjustment on sales tax. Doesn't, you're going to another reading. Have some time to mull it over. We, you know, you could change that amendment at the next meeting. You could also do what we did last year and put it in, transfer out. And that way, it's pretty clear what it is.
Councilman Brant?
I didn't do all this work just to add to the 14 million dollars that we have sitting in the bank. I did this work to lower the price, the cost of living to the the residents of North Pole. I don't know how to go forward with this without taking the time to do all the math this evening. If we do, just park that in in that fund for tonight, work on it this week, and then propose the changes at the next meeting. I would be fine with that. But I'm not willing to leave it in a slush fund for use for whatever.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce sales tax by $200,000 and reduce.
You can only make one motion at a time?
Online sales tax. Okay, I'd like to.
Made me do it, Barry, so.
Thank you, Councilman Brant. I would like to move to reduce total tax revenue by 356,400.
Second.
Discussion?
We've already done that. We don't need a motion to do that. We've already done that.
Actually, we do need a motion to do that, sir, or the numbers are going to be.
So you're saying to move it into, not reduce it? We've reduced the budget 356,000. You're saying your motion is to put it into where?
My motion is to reduce the overall tax revenue for the city by 356,400 as a full category, following my own rule, as you so pointed out, Councilman Brant. And it has been seconded. Any further discussion, please, Mr. Schuster?
As an option, Mayor Church, if you wanted to go back, we could.
As an option, Mayor Church, if you wanted to go back, we could do it individually as well, and I'd second on those as well.
And we could do that separately.
Whatever maker wants.
Please call the roll on that.
Okay, on the motion to reduce sales tax revenue by $356,400, Mr. Williams?
Um, I would say.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Ms. Rolf? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote?
That motion passed by six to one.
And thank you for that.
I have a question.
Please, Councilman Brandt.
So you reduce the total category, but we have two, four, seven different, different line items in that category. How is anybody going to turn, determine which to take out, what to take out of which line?
Madam CFO? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please, go ahead, Councilman Schuster.
The roll was out of sales tax, correct?
No, that was on the, the entire.
Entire tax revenue category. Yes.
I'm not sure that that's the way it was read.
The total sales tax revenue reduced by $356,400.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to, I don't know where it is on the ordinance, but I don't.
It is separated on the ordinance. I think it's probably sales tax as a whole on the ordinance. Possibly online sales taxes split out.
Property tax is included in this, this also. This whole category that he reduces alcohol tax, property tax, sales tax, sales tax miscellaneous, sales tax online, state shared taxes and tobacco tax.
Councilman Claus?
Thank you, Mayor, through the, through the mayor. Madam CFO, I presume that at our next meeting discussing the budget, we can change this.
You have one more chance, yes.
Thank you.
We won't be doing the budget pages, right? Next time it'll just be the ordinance pages.
I'd have to reprint all your pages again.
Anything else? I, I would like to ask a question. So on November 14th at 11:45, Mr. Brandt, you came into City Hall and you collected four packets for Councilman Claus, yourself, Councilman Williams and Councilwoman Rolf, and said that you had to go to a 12 o'clock meeting. I want to make sure that you didn't discuss this budget with any more than one to two additional members and didn't create an open meetings violation by doing so.
I picked up packets for Mr. Claus and Benny, because he couldn't come in. Sandra couldn't come in, so I took it over to, to put in her mailbox, I think, because she couldn't come in. I was just being a, a good neighbor.
I appreciate that.
I did not have a meeting with the four of us, no.
Okay.
And, no.
Did you have a conversation on ordinance 2025-13 with members of this council outside of this meeting or the past meetings?
Yes, two other council members.
Okay. Would you mind telling me who those other council members were that you had meetings with?
I do mind. That's under your business.
It is a little concerning that you may have meetings with two other members, but then discuss it with a third member, or that member discusses it with another member of this council. So I just want to make sure that we are all very careful about how we follow the Open Meetings Act. That by you talking to him and him, if either one of those two talks to her, then we have a violations of Open Meetings Act. So I, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. This is a big thing, and I know you've done a lot of work on this. It, it was very concerning to me that you came in to pick up packets and then tried to take my budget book with you on the way out.
That budget book was sitting on Sandra's, in front of Sandra's desk. Sitting right over there, I grabbed it thinking it was her and I was going to return it to her.
Okay.
What's stealing your budget book, Larry?
With that, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Oh, uh, next we have council member comments. And first up for council comments this evening is Mr. Williams.
We'd just like to say, um, there was an article in the paper, and I think the police department handled it very well. Nobody got hurt, which was very good. The pictures I saw was unbelievable. We all have issues. And some of us got more issues than others. But hopefully this, this person will get the help that he needs. And when I saw that, I couldn't make the pictures out. And then I asked the chief, is this what I think it is? And it was, and I said, oh, okay. So that's something to think about. And, you know, I can see you guys, two, two people in a, in a, in a car responding to a call. I can see that. So down the road, I see that happening. And then that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Skips?
I have nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Skips. Mr. Schuster?
I just want to give a quick shout out to the North Pole Police Department. I had a ride along this weekend, and I rode with Officer Kerner, who was an extreme professional in the, I was very impressed with how he conducted business in his ride along. And I, I think that all stems from leadership at the top. And, uh, yeah, there was, there was moments where you thought you had good staffing, and then 10 minutes later, there was, you were the only ones. So it's, it's, things change minute by minute in that department, and it was eye opening. And I encourage every council member to do a ride along as well.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Mr. Claus?
Thank you. One of the things I wanted to mention, it has to do with also appreciating the police department, but also the fire department, most people don't realize, responds to a lot of these events inside and outside of the city, the police department events for public safety reasons. So there are a lot of callouts that people don't really see this going on. So I think it's important to mention that. So all different staffers who work through, and department heads, of course, who work through the city, kudos to everybody for keeping us afloat and safe and productive and have things running smoothly. But one thing I'd like to mention tonight especially is wishing everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claus. Ms. Rolf's?
I just want to say, kind of go on Santa Claus, happy Thanksgiving for everybody. It's nice that the meetings are online now for all of them. My husband was able to watch, because he's at home with one of the six childrens.
Thank you, Ms. Rolf. Mr. Brandt?
I just want to say, I, I spent a ridiculous amount of time over the last couple of weeks going over the budget, over the past budgets, over the past audits. And I put together a bunch of numbers. You don't have to trust my numbers if you don't want to, but they come directly off of our website. So if you just want to take one of those and pass it down, this is, this is council appropriated budgets from 2018 to now. And how much each department has increased over the last seven years. And then this one is total revenues, total expenditures and the total over or under from the year. So the, I put down the council appropriated numbers, the amended numbers, the audit actual numbers and the variance on each category here. So you can see that especially the, the revenues is concerning to me. 2018, we had $355,000 over. The next year was only 40,000, but the following year was 363,000. Then we were 1.2 million, 1.4 million, 814,000 and almost 1.3 million. Those are over projected revenues every single year for the past seven years. And all of that money, not, not a, a single bit of that money was used to reduce the cost of living in the city of North Pole. And it's been put into our general reserves, which every expert I have talked to, even our own auditor, I asked a question during our audit presentation, agrees that over two to four months is, is not recommended. Well, it's, it's not bad to have that much, but two months is what's recommended. We've got 14 or 15 months right now. And I just think it's time to reduce the cost of living for the residents of North Pole, and I think we can do that at the next meeting. So it's down, I, I'd appreciate everybody at least glancing at this. I put a lot of work into this. And so at the next meeting, when we're trying to decide where, where to put that money that we saved and, and if, if we think the projected revenues are accurate or not, maybe we can adjust those up a little bit and actually lower the, the sales tax rate or the property tax rate or something like that. Anyway, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Mayor Church?
On the rare occasion that I do get to speak during council comments, I'd like to say, happy Thanksgiving. I'd like to thank the staff for being here this evening. I, I feel like this budget has been beat up, moved around, changed, discussed. I believe this is the, our sixth or seventh night being here, talking about the budget. And I would like to very much thank the staff for being here. This is certainly something we could have done at a regular meeting. But I appreciate you all being here this evening and going through that again. Fellow council members, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving. I hope you enjoy time with your family, enjoy the snow and be careful out there. With that, I'd like to move to adjourn.
A second.
And with that, you are adjourned at 9:03 PM.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.